Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular council meeting. Well, we came coming out of closed session. We started at 4:30. But today is Wednesday, March 19, 2025, and we are moving into the open session now. I'd like to start off with my traditional land acknowledgement that the town of Midland recognizes located on land, which is traditional territory and treaty territory of the Inshnabik people, now known as Chippewa Tri-council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. The territory is within pre-confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16 included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. Town of Midland recognizes located on land, which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Dwendat and historic homeland to the Meti and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous people. I'd like to deliver the following safety message. Should a fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed through the evacuation assembly area, which is located in our upper parking lot. You may exit through the main doors, those glass ones there. Make an immediate left, proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit right back here. Up the stairs, check the door for heat for opening. If it's safe, exit onto the second floor. Turn right and proceed out the front door, the door in front of you, or follow any of us. Washrooms are located on the second floor and elevators located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone exhibiting violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. Members of the audience are to maintain order and quiet, not to address council, accept permission of the chair. All cell phones, pages, and electronic devices. Always a reminder for me, which emit a sound are to be turned off or set to non-audible. No person shall display signs or placards, applaud participants in debate, or engage in conversational electronic otherwise or behave in a way that may disrupt proceedings of council. For anyone requiring a hearing assist device, please advise the clerk, and she will arrange with our IT staff to provide you with that device. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted on the town's YouTube site. Those meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel 53 when available. Individual recording, broadcasting, or streaming the meetings by the public or any member is not permitted without express consent to the clerk and all those present. There we go. There's the asterisk text. And with that, I will ask for a moment of silent reflection before we get into the meat of tonight's meeting. Thank you. So I do have, oh, I'm asking if there's any declarations of conflict of interest relating to tonight's agenda, council? All right, anything should pop up as we proceed through the agenda, just throw your hand up and let me know. I have a motion here moved by councillor Emeritus, seconded by councillor Bald, that the council receive his information and confirm the directions as outlined in the confidential verbal report and update provided by the chief administrative officer at the closed meeting session of council held today, March 19, 2025, with respect to the organizational update. Council, we've had a discussion in camera. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next, move by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor McDonald, that further to confidential discussions during the closed meeting of council on March 19, 2025, council hearing confirms that Judy Conton be appointed to the community as our community member representing town of Midland on the Southern Georgian Bay OPP detachment board for the remainder of this term of council. Congratulations, Judy, and to our other two applicants. Thank you so much for applying, and our clerk will be communicating with you in writing shortly with some other opportunities because we value your participation. Council, we spoke about this in camera. All those in favor? Any opposed? Yes, carried. Next, move by councillor Major, seconded by councillor McDonald, that the council receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the confidential PowerPoint presentation, verbal report, and update provided by the Director of Human Resources, Director of Emergency Services, Fire Chief, and the Chief Financial Officer at the closed meeting session of council held March 19, 2025, with respect to the 2024 Midland Professional Firefighter Association Collective Bargaining. Council, we've had a discussion in camera. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. All right, now into the regular open session matters. Move by councillor Major, seconded by councillor East, that the contents of the regular council, the closed session agenda for March 19, 2025 be approved. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next, move by councillor Patel, seconded by councillor McDonald, that the items and related recommendations contained within the March 19, 2025 consent agenda as consent items, having been considered by council, be adopted with the exception of the following four items pulled. Item 10.4.1 CSR 2025-34 2026 Budget Cycle Planning. Item 10.4.2 CSR 2025-35 Town Harbor Culture Tourism Budget Breakdown. Item 10.4.4 CSR 2025-37 Adoption of 2025 Development Charges Bylaw. And item 10.4.5 CSR 2025-38 Dissolution of the Cultural Alliance in the Heart of Georgian Bay. All which will be considered under section 17, reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration, including presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Take a breath. Council, this is your opportunity to make any callouts or quick questions on consent agenda items before we call the question. Councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Just in regards to the minutes, and I know this has been the practice in the past, and I think I've mentioned it before. In the number 14, usually it's around number 14, general announcements, where the council shares items and events and activities, they're never outlined in the minutes. And I am requesting that they could be, or how do we approach that they are? Is my question.
I seem to recall us having this conversation in the past, but Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Your Worship, through to councillor McDonald. We have had the conversation before, and as set out in the procedure bylaw, the general announcements are just without note or comment. It's just stating that council has shared some general announcements with the public.
So to have a change, we would have to review the procedure bylaws, and that doesn't happen until there's another council.
Through Your Worship, through to councillor McDonald. Typically, we will have a review of the procedure bylaw the year of the election, so in 2026. However, any amendment to the procedure bylaw would need council approval to go forward.
Thank you. I'll digest that some more. When we review the first term, we're not familiar with the bylaws. It's a lot to digest. So it would be nice to have an opportunity to review it again.
Through Your Worship to councillor McDonald, I just wanted to point out that when we prepared the procedure bylaw, the purpose for not providing comments or notes is that a lot of times it's not a verbatim record. So we could actually have, there could be misinformation in the minutes. And if we provided more details, so that's why we just kept it general, just to keep it clean.
I can appreciate that concern. Thank you.
Great. There's lots of other good stuff on there. Councillor Emeritus.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. Just concerning 10.11 and 10.12. 10.11 being the Georgian Bay Cancer Support Center waiving the rental fee and the special occasion permit for the Sandy Mason and Friends Lawn Bowling Charity Day for hospice. Just wondering why we can't just, it seems like we approve this every year. Why we can't just approve this for the, for 2026? I'm sure they're going to be coming back to us for this as well. So are we able to approve this for both years if they're going to continue doing the events, which I rather, I think they are?
Through you, Mayor Gordon, we will be updating that in the municipal call policy, which is due to come this quarter.
So. Yeah, well, it's coming. It's coming. Okay, thank you. All right.
Any other callouts? All right, fair enough. And folks, while you're following on at home, the consent agenda is basically approved in one fell swoop, with the exception of the four items that councillors have pulled out for further discussion and debate later in the meeting. So that said, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. All right, move by councillor East, seconded by councillor Emeritus, that council resolve into the committee the whole. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried, and I pass the chair over to Deputy Mayor.
Okay, continuing at number 12, public meeting or hearing, we have none. 13, presentations, we have none. 14, Integrity Commissioner Recommendation Report, 14.1. Integrity Commissioner Periodic Report, June 1, 2023 to February 28, 2025. We have Jeff Abrams attending via Zoom. Jeff Abrams is the co-principal of Principles Integrity to address council. Are you here? Hi, Mr. Abrams.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Thank you for the introduction. I'm here with, which is a good news story. It's an overview of our activity given from June 1, 23 to February of this year. It's a good news story because there has been some engagement. Happy to say that we've worked with you very recently on some council refresher training. There wasn't any need for policy development education. We've provided seven pieces of advice upon request to members, which was helpful. And in fact, we, on three occasions, received complaints, but none of them were concerning. None of them resulted in any report to council. And so that's generally speaking, a healthy amount of engagement. It's appropriate that we be engaged from time to time, and we're quite pleased with the level over the term in question. For the benefit of those who may be listening, an integrity commissioner, as you can see in the chart, and I think it appears on the second page of the report, has a broad range of functions, resulting from getting with consulting, helping to review, adopt, change codes of conduct, that sort of thing, other policies that might govern ethical behavior. We provide education and training, just as we did, I think it was last week. The most important function is to be available to provide members with advice on questions they may have about their own ethical responsibilities. It is, bar none, the most important function of an integrity commissioner. And yes, we do respond to complaints when they arise. We triage those, we deal with them. There's course correction that can be achieved if we do that. And on occasion, we are required to investigate in more formal sense. And if we make findings of breach, we report that to a municipal council. As mentioned, there was not the need for us to do that in this last term. And we do all of that because it helps to increase the level of trust, respect, and engagement that councils receive from their constituents. We're happy to have been involved with a reasonable amount of work for you over the term in question. One of the benefits of a periodic report is it allows us to share observations, both from our own work and the work of other integrity commissioners. And so if I may, Deputy Mayor, I'd just like to run through that quickly. I understand that you may be running a little bit late. I won't take up too much of your time. So from our observations, there remains, and I'm speaking across the board, this is not Midland specific. The disclosure of confidential information is still a concerning matter. It happens with some frequency in some councils. And it can undermine the effectiveness of a council. Information that ought to be shared is sometimes not shared, or it's reluctantly shared. And so it's important that members recognize that the protection of confidential information is one of their most important ethical responsibilities. I'm going to speak just briefly to the avoidance of conflicts of interest. The Midland Code of Conduct, appropriately so, speaks to more than just adherence to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Each of you has a common law responsibility to avoid conflicts of interest, and that's true across the province as well. We are available to provide advice in situations where you cannot resolve what you ought to do in the face of a report before council. It is, in fact, the most frequent type of advice request we get, whether or not a member may participate or may not participate, given the level of interest they may have in an item. And I'm going to conclude my remarks, just recognizing limitation of time this evening, with just a brief comment on the potential for change in this regime in the future. The Bill 241 was a bill that was before the provincial legislature prior to the election. It died on the order table. We don't know if it is going to be resurrected in its current form. We have some concerns that it might be. It was a single-minded approach to that enabled the possibility that an elected official could be removed from office for egregious breaches of their ethical responsibilities. The concern we had was that it led to a lengthy, uncertain, expensive process that may have been useful in two or three occasions across the province over the course of a term, but didn't adequately provide for necessary course correction on the more common situations that an integrity commissioner might face. And so we will be seeking to work with the ministry and its representatives in reviewing what might come forward in order to improve the legislation that we currently have. Have some ideas. We've shared some of those in the past. We're hoping that the ministry is going to be taking us on their offer to have this discussion, at least having a discussion from those of us who practice in the field. And so with that, I want to thank your staff, who we've come, who we've worked with over this term, and yourselves for reaching out to us from time to time for advice requests. As I say, I'll just put a punctuation mark on my presentation this evening. This, we think, is a good news story, and we're happy to be here to deliver it. I'm available. I'm Deputy Mayor. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. All of us really enjoyed our refresher last week. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Mayor Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Abrams. It's great to have you back. It's only been a week. Generally, we don't like to talk to you this with any increased frequency, but the refresher was really valuable for our two new members and also for the rest of us, because it has been a couple of years. It is a good call out that it's good that council appears to be using the service, your services. And for transparency's sake, you know, we get an invoice because we have you on retainer, but we don't get to see the minutia. No staff member, none of us get to see the requests of councillors. So it's that confidence that we're expected to keep extends to you as well. And that's, you know, should offer some assurances to elected people anywhere that, you know, use the service, get your advice, for heaven's sake, follow the advice once you get it. And generally, you're good to go then, as long as they've provided you with all the sort of germane facts on which the, you know, the advice is given. So it's nice to see that number. It's also good to see that there's members of the community that have availed themselves of the process. If there is a belief, even if it's unfounded, you know, in your investigation, if there's a belief by any member of the community or groups that, you know, we're not, you know, meeting our obligations for either the Code of Conduct or the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, then this, you know, the system works in that they can approach you, file the, you know, all the pertinent facts. You do a robust investigation, and, you know, if it's found to be with merit, then there's a next step, which we haven't seen this term, which is lovely. If it turns out to, you know, not be meritful, or it can be resolved through informal matters, that's done too. So, you know, I've been, for those who follow politics, I have some experience with Principal Integrity last term. Not so much on matters of integrity, but other matters. And, you know, I continue to support retaining your organization. I've found you guys to be very fair, very measured, very reasonable, and also, you know, when you do come to reporting to council, which again, a call out has not happened this term. It's been beautiful, that it all makes sense. And, you know, it's difficult to dismiss when a report such as the kind you draft are presented to councils. So thanks for your continued work, and, you know, I continue to believe in your organization, and you're doing great service for us and encourage the community. If at any point, you know, you believe that we're failing in our obligations, either one of us or collectively use the process. Your taxes are paying for it anyway on a retainer basis. So use the process and test your assertions with someone with no skin in the game, who is an expert on interpreting the Code of Conduct in the MCI. So, well, ringing endorsement for you again, Jeff. I try and do it anytime I have you here because, you know, you have a certain wealth for, you know, now into your, now, what are we into the third term or second term?
I believe it's the third time.
Yeah, this would be now the third one, right?
That's right.
Anyway, for what it's worth, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments.
I see no further questions or comments from council. Thank you very much, Mr. Abrams.
Thank you.
I have a motion here. The motion is that the Integrity Commissioner Periodic Report dated March 13, 2025, for the period from June 1, 2023 to February 28, 2025, be prepared and presented by Jeff Abrams, co-principal of Principles Integrity, be received for information. Could I have a mover in a second or please? Councillor Patel. And councillor East. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Moving on to 15 deputations, we have none. 16, Committee Local Board Delegation or Memo, we have none. 17, Reports and Other Items Withdrawn From the Consent Agenda for Council's Consideration Includes Presentations By Consultants Regarding Report Under Consideration. 17.1 KPMG Midland Bay Landing Project Kickoff. Sean Oakley, Director of KPMG Real Estate Advisory Services, and Vivian Tam, KPMG Deal Advisory and Infrastructure, ESG and Corporate Sustainability Strategic to Present to council. So Mr. Oakley and Ms. Tam are here to present to council.
There you go. Were you gonna say a few? We're fine. Well, thank you very much for the warm welcome to Midland. This is about our fourth or fifth trip to Midland, and the weather just keeps getting better and better. We really appreciate the CAO's office creating the weather today. Although I do see some snow piles there, Steve, that you're still working on, I guess. And so, anyway, tonight, we're going to talk about the Midland Bay Landing opportunity. And we're very early in the process, but we're going to look to share a few thoughts today. So we're going to talk about what the opportunity is, the process that we're going to go through collectively as a team over the next couple of months, and then talk about specifically the engagement process, how we're going to work with the community to collectively define a vision for the site, and then share some early thoughts based on some of our early work that we've done with the staff and council. So that's sort of the agenda for this evening. Who's driving the slide deck? Okay, go to the next one, maybe? Next one. So what is the opportunity, you know, starting with Midland? Midland, quite simply, is, you know, the jewel in Simcoe County, you know, one of Ontario's favorite live-work-play areas. Home to a beautiful downtown with 120 amazing boutiques, galleries, restaurants, and great events. And did someone say they got the invite for June for the Butter Tart Festival? You know, Midland Bay itself is quite unique within Georgian Bay. You know, it's a protected harbor. It's the largest natural freshwater marina. It's the only deep-water port on the bay, so it's very unique. And I think that protected nature of it is very interesting. And the site itself, of course, you see there in the mauve color. You know, it's 40 acres, a kilometer of unique waterfront, right in that protected harbor. And I would say this is unique not only within Simcoe, but within Ontario and probably nationally. You know, this is to get this kind of development opportunity is pretty unique. And we've certainly seen lots of interest in these kind of projects. We were fortunate enough to work with the town of Aurelia, the town of Collingwood. We're doing some work with Pickering that all had similar waterfront opportunities. And this one, quite simply, is a great opportunity to transform sort of the historical industrial roots into a new mixed-use, vibrant, live-work-play community with new events, new public spaces, and great access to the waterfront. So really rejuvenate it and bring it forward. Next slide. So what are we going to do? So we're going to start with defining the vision. You know, many of these projects come out, and someone puts a for-sale sign on it, and they hope the development community shares their vision, but often not. So we're going to spend a lot of time trying to figure out collectively what staff, council, and most importantly, the residents want to see happen with the property. So we're not going to design it, but we're going to spend a lot of time thinking about what are the key components and attributes of the site that we want to see. So we've started this journey talking to staff and council. We had some great engaging workshops, thinking about, you know, what's their perspective? Staff is the professionals in the site, and the council is the, as the community representatives. So we've started that journey, and the next is to do the public engagement. So we've got a process that we'll talk about on our next slide as to how we're going to engage the public. And that's probably one of the most exciting parts of the project is really to get, you know, the vision from as many people as possible. You're the people that live, work, and play in the neighborhood. And we really want to see, you know, what do you think about the site and how it could go forward? And the more people that we can engage, the better the project will be. Because at the end of the day, what we want to do is share that vision with the development community as partners. And the more we can give them in terms of guidance, the better off that partnership will be. And also, we're going to talk to some of the people in development community. So before we go out with an RFP or procurement, we're actually going to softly talk to some groups and sort of say, you know, as professionals that build these kind of communities, what would you see? And how can you help us make it a more interesting and attractive process? So we're going to talk to the community as well as talking to the development community at the same point. And at the end of the day, what we want to do is collect, is generate a vision for the site. You know, whether it's access the waterfront, or swimming, or community spaces. We really want to be able to do, have the developers able to visualize and understand what the community of Midland wants to see happen with the site. So that's the most important part of the process, sorry, is to define that vision. The next is sort of how we find the development partner. So it's two parts to it. One is sort of the call for proposals, and this is really finding interested parties. So we go out and take that vision, and we put together a very interesting sort of, call it a marketing deck, as well as the rules of procurement, and we're in the process of drafting that. And then we go out to the development community and say, hey, here's this amazing development site. It's a unique opportunity. It's a generational opportunity. And who's interested and who's qualified to participate in it? And having already spoken to a number of them, we'll be able to go back and say, hey, Midland's ready. Staff's engaged, council's engaged, the residents are engaged, you know, and we've spent as much time defining the opportunity to get them going. And then what we do is we take the best of the qualified groups that share the vision as close as possible. And then we ask them, you know, show us some design concepts and show us a business case. And sometimes the business case is, you know, what can Midland do to support it? Sometimes it's, you know, helping with planning consent. Sometimes it's helping with capital dollars, infrastructure, whatever it happens to be. And that's really a fun part of the process. When you actually see them take words in a vision statement and translate them into drawings, then people get a real appreciation for what it can look like. We've been fortunate enough, in Collingwood, we had a great developer come forward with a very interesting opportunity to transform the grain terminals into a hotel with some residential. And the creativity of the private sector sometimes is just mind-boggling what they come up with. So that's sort of the process, and you can see the dates there. You know, by end of summer, we want to have an idea as to who's interested. And then by the end of the year, know what sort of opportunities the community is bringing forward. So that's sort of the process. And then if we go to the next slide, this is sort of the engagement. And as I mentioned, the more engagement we can get, the better we can define the vision, and the more success we're going to have. So who do we want to talk to? So we want to talk to everybody, you know, the public, the residents, the visitors, the business groups, the community groups. the business groups, the community groups, indigenous groups, and developers and investors. So we want to hear everybody's voice. And how are we gonna do it? You know, the town's gonna launch the new website tomorrow, all right, maybe it's live now. And it's beautiful, it's very exciting, and that's gonna be sort of the heart of the process. There's questions and answer, there's a way for public to provide their input through a survey. There is a questions and answer where you can submit questions and get answers back, and they'll be correlated. So that's gonna be the heart of the process. We're going to, if you sign up, you'll get notices of emails, there'll be public newsletters. The survey is gonna ask sort of, you know, what do you want to see on the site? You know, how are you gonna intend to use the site, whether it's yourself, your family, your business? We really want to get a lot of input on that. So that's gonna be live tomorrow. And we're looking to get as many people signed up for that as possible. Some groups, we're gonna do direct consultations, so we'll have some one-on-one meetings with some of the business groups, indigenous groups. And that allow for a little bit more input. And then we're looking to do some town halls in somewhere around mid-April, where we'll actually have some public open houses, where we'll be there to answer questions, share some thoughts, get some input. So what people can't say in a survey or through a newsletter of questions, there'll be staff and us there to help answer any of the questions. And you can see at the date some of the things there. So, you know, a very engaging process. And where we've got to today, if we go to the next slide, one of the things to do is sort of, you know, if you're explaining to a development partner, what would you like to see on the site? Is putting together a vision statement. So here's an early draft of something that'll evolve as we speak and engage with multiple people. But some of the key words you can call out there, you know, if you say four seasons, you know, no one wants to see a place that's only open for May to September. You know, we want something that's year-round, that people are skating or skiing, or whatever it happens to be. You know, that's a key part of making an active destination space. Access to the waterfront, you know, imagine you go swimming down there, rent a kayak, go canoeing, you know, really have the access to there. You don't feel like it's someone else's property, but it's community-town space that you feel welcome. But more interesting, there's cool things to do down there. So we're looking, we've heard that. Enhance this to downtown, we'll talk about that later. It's about, you know, what sort of things and activities could happen down there that will make the downtown more vibrant and bring more people to shop and live and work down there? Public spaces, you know, we hear, you know, what could we do down there? Could we create some spaces or amenities? And even event space that would really make this a, an interesting park, or not park, but a public space? And lastly, promote the local economy. You know, if this is something that's unique and attractive, you know, you've got six million people south of here that were looking to come to Midland and to give them an interesting reason to come up. And I mean, you see the amount of people that go to Wasaga Beach for the day because there's restaurants and things to do, and nice water and activity, or Collingwood, what they're trying to do. So, you know, if we can do the same here in Midland, it'll be a place that we can bring, you know, lots of people and activity and events to the local area. So that's what we're trying to do here, and we're gonna evolve this. So this is the words that later people try to put design to. And lastly, next slide, yeah, sorry. If you're trying to explain to the partnership, the developer, you know, what are you looking to see and what are you looking to get out of? So this again is an early draft of some of the key considerations. So long-term economic viability, this is where the twelve-month-a-year kind of program makes sense. We want to make sure that, you know, the town's not putting in lots of money and getting nothing out of it. We want to make sure on the other side that the developer is viable and can do something and can invest in all those public spaces. So that's a key part first and foremost, and it's got to complement the downtown. You know, Vivian and I love going into stores and having sandwiches and pizza. And there's so many cool stores that we say, oh, we should go in here and go in there. And, you know, we want to bring that world to the rest of the, to the province so that they can enjoy it as well. So we see there's huge opportunity to work with that downtown. Enhance the cruise business, you know? With that natural protected harbor, there's a unique opportunity. The cruise ship business is emerging. And if we can do more there, that this really puts, helps put Midland on the tourism map, that people really say, oh, yeah, there's some cruise ships go there, so there must be a reason for me to go there as well. And the hotel and accommodation, this is sort of an early concept where people say, maybe that's part of the mix. You know, if we had something down there, maybe this aligns with the cruise ship or aligns with the downtown. If you say, okay, could there be a hospitality component that allows people to enjoy the waterfront and enjoy some of those public spaces? And then we talked about programming. So some flexible community event space. So imagine, you know, whether it's a Canada's Day space or a MA two-four kind of space, you know, some, or music, or whatever it happened to be. So that's come up as an opportunity, some cool community space. Year-round activation, we talked about that, that's so key, is just to make sure that it is a vibrant, you know, space, that people want to come to Midland as much in February as they do in June, you know? And, you know, Vivian and I have been up many times and see what a beautiful space it is down there, whether it's people cross-country skiing or ice fishing, you know? Providing more opportunities and things to do in the winter is a key part of it. A link to the water's edge, you know, right now, it's kind of a tough space to get to. But, you know, imagine whether it's a boardwalk or something along there, or some safe swimming spaces. You know, Collingwood's doing a little protected wharf system that allows people to swim in an area that normally has boats and things going by. So do something like that, that we can really enjoy the water's edge. Public art is always an interesting part of it. And whether it's indigenous or some of the beautiful murals that we see in Midland, do something down there that really makes it a part of the town. We talked about social considerations, you know, public access. Make sure it's conclusive access and open spaces. That it's, you know, for all residents and visitors to enjoy is key. You know, and obviously a barrier-free space. So whether it's playgrounds or access to the water or boating, you know, certainly accessibility will be a key part of the design. So in the design characteristics, you know, align with the master plan. You know, Midland's currently working on a waterfront master plan, and we're working, you know, in conjunction with the consultant there as to how we bring those ideas together. The heritage connection, you know, we want to honor Midland's past, you know? And, you know, the shipbuilding in the past, you know, it's a beautiful story, and it continues, you know, with the grain terminals, you know, and seeing that. And how does that become part of the story and the history of the, of the landing? Parking, parking is always a challenge, and there's two parts. There's the parts that would be, you know, for the public, you know, I want to go swimming, and where am I gonna park? And there's the part that if there's residential or hospitality, you know, how do we provide parking for that? So we're gonna look into that. And that's a broader, not just Midland Bay Landing, but it's a broader community investigation to look at. And then we talked about building density, that, you know, you can either build townhomes and use up all the green space, or you can build higher buildings and have more space between buildings, much more green space, much more public space. And there's a trade-off, you know, if you're looking to get the same amount, I say, housing units. You know, a lot of communities now are focusing on going higher and providing a lot more green space that the public can use and enjoy. And sustainability, you know, we want to make sure that it's sort of a green design that, you know, whether it's using solar panels or water cooling, you know, there's an interesting opportunity to really make this a leader development project in the community that future developments in and around Midland can really look to the project and say, I understand how to build something sustainable. So that's where we've got to today. As I mentioned, you know, the next step is all about public engagement. We're ready to go, we're ready to listen to ideas, we're ready to engage with people, and looking forward to it.
Thank you for your presentation. Before I open the floor to questions, if it's okay with council, I'd like to ask the first question tonight. Can you elaborate on the public meeting part in person with our residents? Is, I didn't see a date or, or what the plan was for that, for in-person public engagement?
If you, Deputy Mayor, I'll answer that. So we finalized the dates for the open house, it'll be on April fifteenth. They'll take place in the Bill Thompson Room over at the arena. So we're gonna do two sessions. We're gonna do one in the early afternoon, so from two to four. And then we'll do one in the evening as well from six to eight. So the idea of those meetings is that there's, there's not gonna be a structured presentation, it's a drop-in. Staff will be there. We're ironing out how we will get that engagement from, from the residents. KPMG will there to be, to assist staff. But we may have tables set up with maps and, you know, and the residents can sit down with staff and give us their ideas of what they would like to see there. We'll have some scripted questions, just so it's not, hey, what do you want? We'll have some like, if residential is there, what type of residential form would you want? So we will have the survey that will also be going live tomorrow, that will also provide some, some feedback on it as well. So I'm not sure, there's anything else, Sean?
No, maybe we'll have a couple of maps that people could point to and ask questions about certain parts of the site.
That's great, thank you very much. Mayor Gordon.
So thank you very much for coming and presenting this tonight. This is kind of what, at our last meeting, where we were in camera, people were asking me, hey, why are you guys in camera talking about this? We were trying to come up with these core guiding principles, just so that, you know, that sheet at the public meeting isn't like an empty, just an empty white paper. Here's, here's the feedback that council has received, you know, both last term, this term, you know, whether it was knocking on doors two years ago, or what we've received since then. Like, you know, the overwhelming thing is like, let's get going. And let's do something down there, for heaven's sake. So we are. And the concept of, of the rethink, you know, which is like a terminology I was using before the election, the pause and rethink, well, the pause happened organically, as we know, because the previous developer hit the eject button. And the rethink, this is the rethink, this is the opportunity. So we have that whole parcel of land. The former plan that people may still remember, you know, that saw the development happening on the east side, a bunch of houses, and there was other commercial, institutional that was meant for phase two years later. That's all gone. This is a fresh start. Although, it's a fresh start in the fact that we're learning from and taking all of that input that we received. Because not all of it was a wash, you know, it just didn't work out for the developer, wasn't financially, you know, viable for them. So we know way more about that property than we ever did leading up to this. So this is like the third kick at the can, hopefully this is the, this is the one that sticks. So our pledge was, you know, consultation, 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 and engagement. So we will do everything we can to promote these public sessions. It's not tokenism, we are truly there to, to listen to your ideas. We want to present you some of the guiding principles that we come up with, we think captures what the community is looking for, for this property. And then we gotta put some more meat on the bones, and we need the community's involvement. So for those wondering, hey, where's the rethink, this is it. And you've been asking for it, it's a little later in the term than we'd hoped, but, you know, as I articulated, we had a couple setbacks that we had to, you know, deal with. And here we are, middle of the term, lots of time left to get this done. And the objective is to have the community help us design all the guiding principles, that the, get it out to the development community, take advantage of the Trump slump, or whatever you want to call it, that we're likely gonna be in over the next year or two while the insanity plays out south of the border, which is an opportunity for us in the development community to spend some time planning. Because if they're not digging, they're planning, they gotta do something. So they may as well put their mind to this amazing waterfront. So I think things are lining up in a, in a unique kind of unexpected way for us. So I can't overstate how important it is for anyone that has input on this, whether you loved the old plan, hated the old plan, never heard of the old plan, and this is the first you're hearing it. Please come out to the, the sessions, participate with the online surveys if you're not, you know, don't like to come to sessions. But participate, because the objective here is to involve the community, be as transparent as possible throughout the whole process, which is why we're doing this with KPMG, not, you know, didn't revive the former Development Corporation. And everything's gonna be presented publicly as best we can. So you'll be part of the whole process, right up to selecting which of the hopefully several submissions we get resonates most with you. And then your council can vote accordingly and, you know, pass the baton and the awarded project off to the next council, who will see it through into reality. So, super exciting time, really glad you guys are here and engaged, it was great to meet. This is the output, folks who are wondering, what did you guys talk about in camera? Boom, here it is. And a week later, no less, so in kind of record time, in a missable speed. And really, really looking forward to the process and hearing from everybody and being involved in it. Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. Thank you, Sean and Vivian, for coming and presenting here in, in person. Much appreciated, and thank you for the coming up for the workshop with the council and staff. And now we're on to the, the public input, which is great to see and hear the results of that. You do have some aggressive target dates that we see here, by the end of this year, we're hoping to have the RFP go out, which is, which is great. The in the public engagement strategy, we've heard Deputy Mayor Post asked the question for the public, through the business groups, the community groups, and the indigenous groups, you have direct consultation here. How, how are we about, how are you gonna go about the specific, are there specific dates to engage with them? Or is it one-on-one, is it in person, or is it, how does that work?
Through your worship to counselor, yes, absolutely, it's gonna be in person. That, that's the best, that's the human nature, that's where you get the, the best feedback. You know, we're gonna work with the executive director to sort of find some dates that work for us. You know, ideally before the, the town halls, so that we get the community input and can go through it. We're also working in parallel, counselor, with the designing the call for proposal, which is the first stage. And we're most of the way through a draft, and we'll be sharing that with staff shortly. So that once the public engagement is complete, very quickly, we can take that input, fine-tune the call for proposals, and get it out to the market. So we're pretty confident with the dates.
Oh, that's great to hear. The one, one other question I had, if public engagement goes, you know, on the fifteenth, we have two, two, two-hour sessions here. If, if we feel that we need a public engagement session in addition to, to that night, is that a possibility? Again, these are aggressive, aggressive timelines we have here. And I've stated before, we gotta get this right, so we don't want to rush it, but we certainly want to get, move forward with this. So would that be a possibility?
Executive Director, did you want to answer that? I mean, certainly we can, you know, if we find there's great interest and people say, I'd love to attend, but I can't make it that night, that we have the flexibility that we could add a third session to it? You know, if that's the feedback you get for your constituents, and what did we pick, a Tuesday night? Yeah, so if people say, you know, I got hockey or soccer, whatever it happens to be, and why don't you do something on a Wednesday or a Thursday, we'd be open to that. So we'll monitor that with the executive director, just to sort of see, you know, what the feedback is, and if there is a, a need for a third time.
Great, and I'm sure that survey will cover a lot of the areas that are gonna be at this public meeting as well. So hoping that we get good engagement online as well. That would be great, thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you, I just wanted to guess touch on the survey. Are we also giving people an opportunity after that survey closes to? Are we also giving people an opportunity after that survey closes to email, say if they can't come into their opinion of it? Or monitoring Facebooks?
Yeah, I can answer that. The, the town has created an email address for the project. And that will be monitored and, you know, questions answered. And if we get, you know, the questions will probably get published as to what the answers are to those questions. So we don't keep getting the same question. But absolutely, there is lots of ways for people to get engaged.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear. I'm excited to see it move forward. So thank you.
Any further questions? Mayor Gordon.
Just a quick note for any of the development community may watch this online after. If you check our webpage of the town of Midland, just search for Midland Bay Landing. You will find publicly available links to documents, all the studies we've done. Even studies that our former development partner did, we procured those after that deal terminated. So we, we've got everything. Like, I don't think there's a municipality that, that has as much detailed environmental assessments right down to the CPU, all the studies, I think the geotechnical information, like things that a new developer is going to want to do and fact check for on their own, of course. But we're offering up a property that's a brownfield site that we know has contaminants. And we've done all the background work that's more than you could imagine. And all of that stuff is publicly accessible right now. So anybody that has an interest in this, who knows how to read some of these studies, you got to put your propeller head, head on, hat on. They're there for public consumption. And of course, they'll all form part of the RFP ultimately. But it's there now. So if you're starting to scratch your head going, hey, I wonder if I can scratch some investors together to build something amazing for Midland. Even before we've gone out to the, to the first phase, that information is online right now and has been for a while, truthfully. So avail yourself of it because it is a treasure trove of really expensive valuable work that's been done over the years that culminate in making a really informed decision to participate in this process. So please do.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So what we have is we're using the Engage Midland portion of the municipality's website. So within there, that's got all the information on the project. And then at the bottom, there's a link to the Midland Bay Landing page, which has all the, the, the past studies that is worship is, is referring to. So residents can stay up to date, informed in the Engage Midland website. That's where the survey is where the residents can fill it out. So that will go live tomorrow. Once, once this meeting does conclude and then we'll have that live. So that way the residents can start providing their input to staff on the project. Thank you.
What's the URL to the Engage Midland website? Is that different than our midland.ca? That also happens to have a section called Engage Midland?
Through Deputy Mayor, it's midland.ca forward slash engage. Now list to not just this project, but all, you know, all the current projects that the municipality is working on. So as it's been referenced tonight, the waterfront master plan, the parking study, all those projects, once they start getting kicked off, will, will be uploaded on here as well. And as well as any infrastructure projects that are currently underway.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you for your presentation and we're all anxious to hear from everyone and get the project going and my question is in regards to the council input, we've had an opportunity to express it. But are we expected to again do the survey? Or how do you want to hear? What I envision as opposed to what Counselor Meredith or Counselor Ball envisions? Have, or you've already documented all of that?
No, but absolutely you're welcome to complete the survey. What we're going to do is once we get some of the data from the survey, the intent to sit down with staff and then council, just to sort of share where we are. And at that point, we can get specific thoughts as to, you know, I totally agree with this. Or the community said this is the number one priority. And then, you know, so we will have another working session with council to review, you know, what the public and the developer input has been.
Thank you.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. We had a great meeting when we're in camera. The question I have is the surveys, do we have anything in place? So surveys are not toyed with by general public in place? That's my question. Thank you.
To you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor. Yes, we're using secure protocols.
Well, I see no further hands up or questions or comments. I do have a motion here. Thank you very much for your presentation. And we're looking forward to, to moving forward, forward with this finally.
Thank you. You're, you're very welcome and always a pleasure to be in the lovely town of Midland. So look forward to working together.
Thank you very much. So the motion reads, the staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-five dash forty-two Midland Bay Landing Project kickoff dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five be received for information. Could I have a mover and a second or please? Mayor Gordon and Counselor Major. All in favor? Unanimous, that's carried. Round to seventeen point two. CSR dash twenty twenty-five dash forty-one Minister zoning order request, five sixty-five Palm Beach Road. I'll read the motion and then I'll ask for a mover in a second or the staff report CSR dash twenty twenty-five dash forty-one Minister zoning order request, five fifty, five sixty-five Palm Beach Road dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five be received. And that the public be, the public meeting be completed prior to council responding to the Del Brook Minister zoning order request. So could I have a mover in a second or please to put on the floor? Counselor East. And Mayor Gordon. Do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. So this will be, this is the first time since this MZO concept was created by the province. I think that Midland has ever contemplated using it. And it's, you know, some would see it as the nuclear option. Because it, there are some caveats in that it restricts. Well, I can let the ED speak to the actual restrictions, but it restricts things like appeals to OLT. And also doesn't allow for public meetings under the planning act. It's kind of like a hop and a skip and a jump right over top of all the normal processes, landing right on the, the housing minister's lap. And then we have a brand new housing minister, actually as of today, someone I've never heard of or met yet. Minister, Minister, what is his name? I wanted to have it ready so I could say it. Robert Flack, Mr. Rob Flack, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And his, his deputy minister is Mr. Grayden Smith, Associate Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Grayden Smith was former Mayor Bracebridge and was past Minister of MECP, I think, last term. At any rate, so we have new people at the, at the provincial level. And, you know, the elephant in the room is that MZOs kind of became a four-letter word for some municipalities because they were, I don't know if I'll say abused, but the perception was that they were being used as the default tool to accelerate planning that would normally otherwise have a more public scrutiny. And that, you know, some of those brought the provincial government, the last iteration of it anyway, into disrepute. And a lot of problems, some of them have been walked back. Sometimes it was the developer that didn't move ahead. You know, other times it was, you know, the process maybe shouldn't have gone that way. And that's happened all over the province. Midland has never done this before. So we wanted to be, or should, when I say we, I mean, me specifically, if, if I'm going to support this, which I do, just heads up. I want to make sure that we actually are checking all the boxes, that this is the appropriate use of the MZO tool. Because, you know, when all you have is a hammer in your toolbox, everything looks like a nail. And this can't be used arbitrarily, or it shouldn't be used arbitrarily in place of all the normal planning processes that we love to run and that we're duty bound to run as municipality. So the case was made at a previous meeting that this project does meet the requirements. Not just out of, you know, desire, but out of necessity to get the shovels in the ground. And the fact that it's a number of these lots, significant number are being donated to Habitat for Humanity for desperately needed, deeply affordable housing at no cost to the taxpayer, other than perhaps some expediency. So the expediency is this MZO application to the, what's going to be the new minister, new ministry as of tonight. And the justification for it is all included in this report, counsel. So we can talk about that. And one of the suggestions was that I thought was rather novel, is that a public meeting still be held. And that's usually the first thing that people freak out about. MZO means no public meeting because they're right. Under the planning act, there isn't one. You know, we skipped that process. Because there's no right to appeal, et cetera, when, once the minister signs it. But our staff, and I completely support this, said, why don't we have a public meeting anyway? I know we don't have to, but nothing says under the planning act, we have to. And the MZO, you know, gives us a hall pass from that, but there's no harm in doing it. The only harm would be if, you know, the public meeting was three months from now and, you know, just added undue delay when it wasn't necessary. So I completely support the fact that staff have rigorously gone over this application with the proponent and their planners. That this checks all the boxes, like literally all the boxes for an MZO. There is no other path forward because of the OPA seven stuck in appeal that are stuck in appeal and waiting to be approved by the province. And that this is the, the suitable way to move forward on this application, but not all other applications before us. So that's the, the point that I want to make is this would be a precedent. And one that at least I can commit to for this term, that we're not, you're not going to see me whipping this tool out of the toolbox for every developer that comes in front of us and says, hey, I want to build a house. So it has to meet the requirements. And this one, I believe, does. And so does staff as, as you can read in this report. But the idea of having a public meeting, I think, is, is, there's no reason not to. As long as we don't induce undue delay in the process by doing so. So what I'd like to do is suggest or ask that, you know, can we get the public meeting woven into the agenda at our next regular council meeting in three weeks? It would be a public meeting, just like the ones for the planning act, except we're hosting it out of, you know, because it feels like the right thing to do, not because we have to do it. And we'd receive comment from anybody that has concerns. And in the meantime, they can read your report and read the justification and why the MZO is an appropriate tool in this particular case. And speak either in favor of it or against it, or as often happens, nobody shows up when we do our public meetings anyway. But I think following this and how hosting a public meeting, even though we're not, you know, obliged to do so under the, the legislation, but doing it because it's the right thing to do is something I totally support. And I was so happy to see staff come forward with that. My only thing is I'd like to make sure we don't let this file, you know, start to age. And I'd like to see if possible, that public meeting, assuming council agrees, be a put onto our next regular agenda. So we can get through that process that we're putting upon ourselves. And then make the decision to either send this to the ministry for review, which they could refuse. Or have them sign it and then move on in this process and get shovels in the ground, which is the intention here. So there's like comments and a bit of a challenge to our ED to see if that's doable, possible, feasible, et cetera.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So the next council meeting would be April ninth. As this is not a requirement under the planning act, that twenty day notice doesn't, doesn't apply. It's not statutory. So we can look to prepare a notice and get it out by the end of the week. It's pretty straightforward. And we can do our regular notification and circulation. And residents are encouraged to, to provide comments and attend the meeting. Just going back on the minister zoning order, it, it is a tool in the toolbox. If, if the province didn't want people to use it, it wouldn't be in the planning act. So it is, it is something there that if there is policies that are a little bit harder to meet, that, you know, under previous provincial governments, it wasn't used as much. Under this current government, yes, it has been utilized a lot more. We had, when I was with the township of Tay, we had a similar situation for an application on, on Triple Bay Road for a facility for individuals with autistic needs. And we did the same thing. We recommended to council, have a public meeting just to get public input on this. Because as planners, we want to ensure that the public interest and the public have an opportunity to provide comment on, on applications. That's why Minister zoning orders aren't necessarily planner's favorite thing, municipal planners especially. Because we have to, we're the ones that happen to answer the, the public when they do have questions on this. So we did it for that project. And we had one person come out and comment on it. And it was the person that sold the property to Dr. Blue. So, but we felt as staff, as planners at that time, that it, it met our requirement, our professional obligation to have that consultation. So the manager, planning and myself looked at this proposal and we thought this would be the best avenue to ensure that we do cover that off. So that's what we're requesting as, as is worship has outlined, that, that a public meeting, it's not statutory, it's not required. So if council decides to not have it, you can still make a decision on support or not to support the MZO request. And then the applicant then would then proceed accordingly. But we would look to have potentially a public meeting on the ninth. If, if council does so direct us to get the notice out as soon as we can, so that we can, we can have that ready. Thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that our council especially has been all about transparency and involving the public. So I agree, I would like to see this. And I appreciate that it's going to come back quickly. And I guess it just means the Delbrook group has to come hang out with us again. So sorry, but we'll see you in three weeks, I guess.
Also. Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. Just briefly, I wonder if someone could describe to me any other municipalities that had used the MZO procedure and whether it's successful.
Yeah, through Madam Chair, it's, it's a tough question because each municipality has different reasons for requesting or an applicant has different reasons for requesting. So for example, the one in Tay was approved. More recently, an example that I can think of is the city of Berry in the old fairground lands where the curling club is. They went through a Minister zoning order request and the ministry actually turned that one down. So each one's unique in its own circumstance. So municipalities, there's been more handed out probably in the last ten years than there had been maybe in the past twenty years before that. So, but like I said, it's a tool in the toolbox that is there for a reason for developers and municipalities to use. So it's, those are, the Berry is probably the most recent one that I've read, that they've utilized it and it was actually denied. So not everyone gets rubber stamped when it goes to the province. The province does look at these carefully. And the one in Berry was residential and commercial, was big, huge development in that major property right along the, right along the highway. So yeah, that's, that's the most recent one that I can think of that was actually denied.
Thank you. And what's the timeframe? And once it's submitted, can you withdraw it? What, what is the possible timeframe? If you can guess at that, I'm just curious.
Through Deputy Mayor, so are, are you requesting clarification if we, if you approve it, support it or deny it? Pull back the approval?
After it's submitted.
So after it's, through you Deputy Mayor, so after it's submitted, it's, it's tough to say how long it'll take, especially with now a new, a new minister in place. They're going to be getting caught up on some of the files. So it could be, it could be a couple of months. I, I would anticipate before we would hear anything.
Thank you. It's an interesting process to be introduced to and I'll be watching and learning.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Post. Just a question on the from the last meeting we had, has there been any? from the last meeting we had, um, has there been any, um, letters or, or phone calls to yourself? Um, from the public in concern with this development?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor, no, there's been no correspondence or phone calls received by staff.
Seeing no further questions or comments, um, council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So moving on to seventeen point three, that staff report CSR dash twenty twenty five dash thirty four, twenty twenty six budget cycle planning dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty five be received and that the twenty twenty six budget cycle be advanced as per the schedule set out in CSR twenty twenty five dash thirty four and that the budget public meeting and the presentations by the various agencies, boards and commissions be set for November twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. And that the twenty twenty six draft budget deliberations be set for December ninth and tenth, twenty twenty five. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Ball. Counselor McDonald. Does anybody have any questions or comments on? Counselor Major.
So the last budget was my, my first one. And now you're going to try and, we're going to try and do it in two days? Oh, I, the only trouble is it's, it's, everyone can sit and say, oh yeah, that's great. We'll do it in two days. But then if we mess up, it's like the taxpayers of Milton are on the hook for our, our, uh, like if we don't do it right, we don't do our due diligence and we mess up. And then all of a sudden, it's like back on us for not doing our job properly. Like I don't mind, I get the two days. But then shouldn't we have a day to cool off and then another evening or another half day or something? Because I don't think in two days after I went through the three hundred and eighty pages, made notes and everything else and showed up last year, like bringing it down to two days, I'm not, uh, with that at all.
Uh, through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Major, I, I certainly appreciate your concern, um, and it being your first budget as well as Counselor Patel's. Uh, for the rest of council though, it will be their fourth, right? And so, you know, I will say the, the document hasn't changed much. Uh, the format hasn't changed at all. Um, you, you know what to expect, right? Um, the operating budgets are, are base budgets, which you know, we come in as, as, as tight as we can. Um, you know, I'm always going to advocate for those reserve transfers, which I know is going to be a discussion that we'll have hopefully earlier than at the end. Um, and the capital items, right? Which again, we have a very significant capital plan in place right now, right? So, um, if I had a crystal ball, I'd, I'd say that our twenty six S probably will be less. Um, so that we can get the work done that you've had, that you have approved. The idea with going down to two days is again, being the fourth, fourth budget of this term. Um, just really trying to streamline the deliberations. Uh, at the end of the three days, I think everybody's exhausted, as, as you said. Um, and I, and I think that we can, we can do it in a shorter time. So I will say, one of the things we did was we moved the ABC's presentations to the night of the public meeting. Um, since I've been here, so I've gone through three budget cycles now. Uh, the public meeting, I think in all three years, I think I've, we've had one person come. Um, so bringing those presentations to that night will, will make that meeting more meaningful, right? Um, gives council, uh, the opportunity to ask questions, get answers and, and really have that information soak in. Not debate, not, and certainly not, not, not make any decisions that night, right? That is truly an information session. Then on December ninth and tenth, we would go through the operating budget, which again, you should feel comfortable with, you should be familiar with, uh, any of our new capital S and the service level changes, right? Which we know are the things that make impact. And if we get all the ABCs done ahead of time and we're really just saying yes or no, essentially, um, I think two days is, is, is manageable. There is an option in the report that if, if council does want to add that third day back, that's, that's council's will. Um, but you would be essentially extending the deliberations. So if council feels that the three days isn't enough, um, you know, adding in an additional day, which we, you know, could be December eleventh. Um, that would be really making it three and a half days instead of the three days that we've, um, traditionally had. Thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Uh, love the enthusiasm. Um, I actually really appreciate that it's earlier. I know we've been talking about that for a while, so glad to see that happening. Um, as well as having the ABC presentations at that meeting for information makes a lot of sense to me. I, I, it, it should be, I think, thought about and, uh, I think where we are, uh, missing it is that we're not going to just say yes or no, though, even, you know? We're going to ask our questions, but there's going, there's going to be a debate based off of just the behavioral pattern of this, uh, council. So, uh, I would, I don't agree with the taking away the third day either. I think quite honestly, we almost did it in four days. We were here for quite a long time on one of the days that could have been extended to four days. And I, I agree, this isn't our first rodeo, but we do like to talk and we do like to make sure we're making the right choices. So I, I feel like two days is ambitious. I don't know if we can do it, but I agree with everything else.
Um, I agree with the agencies and boards presenting in one evening at a council meeting. I think that's fantastic. But the two, going down to two days makes me very nervous because, um, I, I, it's hard for all of us because there's a lot of questions. There's, there's a lot of things that get talked about. And the only thing, I mean, we could prop, maybe we can do it in two days. But I think having that set in, you know, where it sort of feels like in stone, but if we know we can go over, where we can go over half a day, because that'll still bring it down to three if we do it one, at the, in the evening, right? A couple of weeks before, um, I think knowing we have that time might be more relaxing. Because when you're on a time schedule like that, and because in our minds, we're, we're, everything's cut shorter, we, we might feel that much more pressure. And it is hard. It's hard to go three long days and we did three long days. Um, I kind of, I do like the idea of having a day break and then coming back for the final, and that could be half a day. I don't know. That's just my opinion. Mayor Gordon.
Oh, well, reading the room, it sounds like maybe this is just too, we're moving this ahead, which is already a bit of a win, rather than having it in the following year or in the budget year. Um, so maybe, maybe we do this in baby steps. So the fact we're doing it earlier is awesome. We'll get the ABCs on the public meeting night, um, and would love to, for the fact that tons of public come out, we won't get through all the ABCs. Let's, let's be optimistic. Maybe that'll be the year. Uh, but that's predictable. Future behavior is past behavior. Seems like there's a lot of apathy lately. I don't know. I, I'd love to see more people out at the public meeting, you know, rather than having to argue on Facebook. I'd love to have the people at the mic. You know, stand up and talk about this. But, uh, regardless, I would be, what I propose this alternative, instead of extending it to the, um, the following day, the Thursday, why don't we give everyone that break and breather? And we come back and we do the last day, which could be a half day, or it could be a full day. Let's do it on the Friday. So, you know, we'd have our, uh, effectively our first two days of budget deliberations as planned. The Thursday would be the breather day. Everyone can decompress, contemplate things, emotions that tend to build up when we're jamming things together. Uh, have a chance to settle and we come back on that Friday instead. And we schedule half a day on Friday and with the object, objection, objective of getting through it all. And if we have to run until five or six, so be it. But that way we're not, you know, doing a midnight budget meeting. So that would mean it's three, technically three and a half days. So it is a bit longer. So ABCs would still present on the public meeting night. And we put aside three days for budget with the day three kind of being our, you know, fill in the blank day and, and it's, guys, that one breather day of the Thursday and we come back and do it Friday. What, what does council think of that idea?
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. And thank you for proposing, bringing it forward. I, it makes so much sense to, to, to plan your budget for the year before the years upon us. So I appreciate that fact. I have more confidence than my fellow counselors. I felt we could do it in two days. We might have to say, you've said that. You can't keep saying it. We're moving on. We just have to be a little bit more stern with our time. I think if we try the two days and we're exhausted, if you're not sending me home before midnight, I won't be happy. So then we say, okay, let's cut it and, and plan the third day. But I think your schedule that's proposed before us is doable. That's my thought. I just have to share with you one thing that amused me, reading your report. And then I have a question. What amused me was that the composition of the incoming council significantly changes after municipal election. So I read there that she's not, you're not expecting us back. It's just humor. But my, my question is, um, then in twenty twenty seven, when there's a, a reelected chosen council, uh, does it go back to the following, like when is that scheduled in the December? Like, no, the twenty twenty seven budget won't be set, so it would have to go to January.
Uh, through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor McDonald, uh, yes, by, by no means was that comment, uh, directed at this council. That's, um, strictly speaking from, from past experience. And so typically when a council does turn over and there is a, a number of new counselors, which we, we did have this, this term. Um, often either the prior council will recommend the, the budget to the future council, right? And then sometimes they'll rubber stamp it. Or they, the new council says, we really want some additional time to go through this, right? And so certainly we would, we would have that conversation, right? So by no means are we trying to commit the twenty seven budget at this point. Um, that, that will be a, a wait and see. Um, but typically then the following year, right, you would get back onto this, this normal schedule. Um, so I, I would say the twenty seven budget at this, at this time would be to, to be determined based on council's comfort.
Thank you.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I agree with Counselor McDonald, um, that we should try this format. Because three days, I mean, a lot of times discussions were unnecessary, I felt as well. Um, so we can, we can speed it up by, you know, repeating things that shouldn't be repeated. And, you know, I mean, it's my, it was my first, but most of them is going to be the fourth. Uh, most of the items do repeat themselves, just the number changes by inflation, uh, I, I believe. So I, I think we should try this because we've been doing the same thing, trying new things can teach us something that we don't know. And then maybe we can bring it down to one day, the budget. Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Um, yeah, I, I, I do agree with the, the two day, um, budget cycle here. Um, I'm, I don't think the majority of the, of, of the changes come on the last day. And if we hear the ABCs prior to, um, I think that's great. Um, that takes at least three quarters of a day off the table. And again, if we keep the, uh, um, and I'm, I'm guilty of talking a lot and I'll, I'll improve if, uh, if we go down in two days. Um, but typically I, we, I, you don't see much change in, in the needle the first two days. So, uh, it's, it's the last day that, uh, the major changes happen. Um, but I would, I would like to recommend that all, all the, the motions that, that are, um, that are done, they're, they're all done in principle. So at, at the end of it all, we can go back and make, uh, make adjustments. So I, I, I would like that opportunity to, uh, instead of going to like our last budget cycle, we had to bring, um, at the very end for the cap, I think it was the capital. Um, we had to go to a two thirds vote. I like to strike that out and have everything in principle so we can go back. That's my only, uh, request going to a two day. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Meredith. So I, I completely understand, um, your, your point. The, the motions are written that way, um, so that the day goes, goes on, right? Uh, decisions are made, we move on to the next thing. Um, and so the motions that are in principle are those operating budget motions, which really in the schedule, see, we don't have an individual motion for each department. Or I'm proposing not to have an individual motion for each department. We will still go through the, the, the pages one by one. Council will still have the opportunity to ask about the, the changes to the budget. Um, but we would just have one motion. So we would essentially be, be, um, approving the, the, the base operating budget all at once. Um, the other motions in the past have always been written as, as definitive. Um, capital, you know, though, as you know, those, those, those capital decisions don't impact the tax rate. I mean, they do affect our long-term planning, but they do not affect the, the immediate term tax rate, right? Um, our, and then, so you, you have your capital, you have your operating, and then we get into service level changes. We shouldn't be making service levels changes if we're not comfortable with the base, right? Because you'll recall, our, our capital program is, is mostly replacement of, of our existing assets and, and programs that we have today. So, you know, if we're not comfortable doing that and we're not comfortable with our base budget, then we shouldn't be approving those service level changes. So those motions are written so that we don't go back on what we've decided because something new has been added. So that is, and, and again, it's, it's still, council still has the ability to overturn that, as you said, with that two thirds majority. It just means that one member can't make that decision on their own.
Okay. Thank you very much. So if, if the base budget doesn't get approved, right? If we, up here, your, the base budget's too high, then we're going to go, what, we're going to go through it one by one, by one. Um, so now we're into, you know, four days. So that could happen with like-minded council on the next term. Who knows? Um, but I, I think that when we're doing budgets, and I like to do budgets, is, is if, if the rate's too high, um, in my view, it's, we can go back and, and make some cuts where, you know, we're all kind of teetering, but make some adjustments. So that's, that's the way I think budget should work. I, I don't think, um, it should be carved in stone from day one. And then at, at day two, we're at a, you know, five or six percent budget where we didn't want to be as council. I'm sure we'll be below three this year, probably like two point one. Um, and I'm sure staff's going to work hard to, you know, to make me wrong on that one. It's going to be less. But anyways, I'd like to go back, uh, and have the opportunity to do that. So, um, not saying I'm going to get my way, but I, I don't think a two thirds vote is, um, you know, it's hard to get as we, as I did. Uh, we tried it. Um, I didn't get it, but, uh, but then we had to go into our reserves to get down to the three point nine nine. So, and then although the capital doesn't hit the, hit the, uh, the tax rate, it's still coming out of taxes. Uh, reserves are taxes, so. So we can probably make changes if we really wanted to. So. so we can probably make changes if we really wanted to. So instead of, you know, not approving the base budget, then we're in a big pickle. And it may happen. So I'm not sure how prepared that staff would be to to handle that one. So thank you.
Counselor East.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the two days would be wonderful. Truthfully, it's the busiest time in my season. So I'm committed to midland, but I'm pulling myself out. So I would love to see two days work, but truthfully, much like we run meetings like tonight, for instance, and we have the opportunity to speak on reports instead of pulling them and repeating ourselves numerous times. I can't. I I just can't see how we would pull off three days. I I truthfully have found, well, maybe my health is a part of it, but three days was very unhealthy. So to try to jam it in two days, I'm all for it. But I think everybody around this council around this table has to really be approval of Bill our mayor running the 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 budgets really strict, like not repeating ourselves constantly. We should be able to approach certain budget questions ahead of time instead of bringing them forward and once again, repeating ourselves, which we don't have to do. Like, truthfully, a lot of our meetings, even normal meetings, run on way too late, right? So I'm fully supportive of two days, but I think we all have to be in agreeance that we have to give Bill the ability to really steer us. I guess would be the word because either than that, there's no way that it's going to be pulled off in two days. You see what happens with even normal meetings. So something as serious as a budget to try to try to do without really letting Bill forcefully steer us. I I just can't see how it's possible. That's the truth. Yeah, like, that's the way it's got to be. Like, truthfully, that's the way it's going to have to be. Right? Would would everybody agree that for this to streamline and run properly, there has to be somebody in control at that point, right?
If I can if I can just add to that, Deputy Mayor Prost, and that that's our responsibility too. So if we go, you know, off the rails here, we got to bring everybody back in point of order. Don't think we use one this year. So we have to be better at that as well as as council, right? So so I I'm willing to to go down in two days and be strict and so forth and, you know, do our homework, ask our questions. Staff is always there during before the budget. As I said, I've had three meetings with staff this year, which is which is awesome. So, you know, if we're all engaged and want to get this, you know, be very, very prepared before we come in and not ask the questions at at budget time, but but ahead of the game, I think we can nail this down. So, thank you.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just joking. Counselor Meredith here, like he talks as much as I do, so good luck. But I do think that we do ask questions ahead of time, but we still, even with us knowing that knowledge, we bring it forward during the public meeting. Because if we have those questions, the public also has those questions. So I think that that is good for us to talk about. And we're not always, I guess you're saying you had three meetings, right? We are we're not involved in those three meetings, so we're not getting the same answers you're getting. So it's it's nice to stem the conversation, I think, further sometimes when we all have the same information and the public does as well. So I I like that. I don't like the idea of having a break in between. I think that's you lose the momentum. I think the same with staff. We're asking them to be in this stressful environment where we're asking them a million questions and we're, you know, drilling them in some cases. Sorry about that. And then to ask them to have that break and have that my and then come back with that mindset again, I think that's a lot. So I would rather just see it all the way through. So if that's in two days, I'd rather see it in two days than us taking a break in between. I don't like the idea of that.
Okay, before I go to Catherine, Counselor McDonald and then Counselor Patel, I just wanted to say that I I could think about the the two and a half days because it's the the half day is an evening is split up with if the motion actually stated that if we needed to take that third day, it was just an automatic. And that way, we're not feeling the stress or the pressure because it is a time that we're supposed to ask questions and we were we we're going to get the answers and it all takes time. And we were all worn out after three days, all of us. It it was hard. And to take some of that pressure off, and then if we get in our minds, we're doing it in two days. But if we know there's the option of the third day, if needed, I mean, maybe we'll streamline and be fantastic. I don't know that. But having knowing that we have that so that we can still continue to do our job, but we're you got to remember, we're taking the time to read through a huge document and try to make sense of of a lot of it and understand it. I mean, it does get easier every year, but there's still there's still lots to consider and go through and and it you can't read that document and remember it. It it just doesn't work that way, right? I can't read 400 pages and remember everything that I read. It's going back. And so there's a lot of effort that we all put into it. And I'm just thinking, you know, we should be allotted the time if required, right? Okay, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I recognize I've already spoken, but this is on a point that Counselor Meredith made, and it's in regards to if we're discussing a particular item and can he ask that that be accepted in principle, not the entire agenda, but just that specific item? That so that we can see where we're at and then perhaps say we're talking about cut to to a particular ABC agency and we're not convinced, is that feasible? Would that work?
Through Counselor Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor McDonald, I I certainly would would prefer that that approach. So it's not sort of a blanket, everything is in principle. Because you're right, there there may be, you know, a particular project or or something that is of, you know, you're you're on the fence about, right? And so again, none of the motions are being written tonight or anything, right? That all comes later. So yeah, that that certainly can be done at any time, right?
Thank you. Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we do have the to Counselor Miss Miss Ball. We do have the public meeting night. The public has questions regarding certain items, but us trying to, you know, go each line by line just to think that all the public might need this, public might need to be aware of this. That's why the budget could we could be here for a month. I personally don't have a problem doing the budget for a month, but we should do it the the timeframe that's presented here. I got lots of time. You know, and it's less trouble at home if I'm here. But what's proposed here, it's 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 a good good idea. And we should try it. And what Mr. Counselor Meredith is proposing, maybe certain items need to be revisited. If if that needs to be, then we can certainly entertain that. Thank you.
Counselor Meredith.
Just one final comment. I do like the the ABCs on on prior to the the budget. So however, we decide here, if we're going to still do the three days or two and a half, I'm 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 positive that we'll get out of here, you know, at least two and a half days, if not at two, if we have the ABCs prior to the the budget. So if we need to make another motion to 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 put that on a different day, a separate one, then I think that is a great idea because it day three, we're here, I think, 10 hours. And we just want 12 hours, 12 hours. And with the, yeah, so those presentations would take a lot, a lot of time off the clock. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. So I'm sounds like we're we're good with two. It's going to be a tough slog, but we can do it if we're more strict. I mean, our procedure policy says you have to speak to things twice and not rehash the same thing over and over again. I know I'm pretty lax on that, just because I like having a conversation and generally we find consensus. But in the interest of time, I can certainly, we can all commit ourselves to be more, you know, rigorous on the the two comment rule, but I really don't want to stifle debate. I I I think we're working well the way we do. I know sometimes there are meetings to do on late, but I think we work well in this capacities, even though the rule says two times. You know, I'm kind of loathe to enforce that rule because I just think everybody seems to get it. Just on the one point, though, I just want to reiterate that the approving the capital stuff in principle and then so we can revisit it later. You know, I I agree with Madam CFO. It just it doesn't really make sense because the things that are going to really move the needle that we strive for, which is the budget, the tax rate are not impacted directly, you know, arguably indirectly, but not indirectly by the the changes we make to the capital side. And the capital isn't normally new stuff. It's things we put into this the capital plan, and it's appearing as it should on each year. And it does drain reserves and which have to be replenished from tax money. So there's no no disconnecting that that reality. But to suggest that, you know, on day two or day three, as it were, that, you know, okay, we're we're going to approve this staff, but I want to go and you're not going to get this truck now. Like, the two have nothing to do with each other when it comes to the budget planning, you know, like, we need the truck. There's a demonstrable arguable need. It's going to suck back some tax money that we put in from yesteryear and we'll have to replenish at some point. But there really, to me, it doesn't make sense to blend the the capital as a bargaining chip for operational. They we need to approve the capital on day one, get through the list, parse it as, you know, granularly as we want, line by line, or just pick out things that irk us. So we're wondering, why are we buying this? But we need to settle on that and approve it. And it shouldn't be something that we leave hanging and then have to go and revisit. Otherwise, we have the cyclical endless rehashing. You know, well, if you don't want the truck, well, I want the truck, but I don't care about the generator or whatever. Like, we we need to make our decisions and stick to them. So we have day one where we argue the merits of these things, make the decision, move on. And day two, and what was day three, are the changes we can make that are actually going to change the tax rate, which is typically our objective because that's what we're judged on mercilessly sometimes. So I just, I'm I'm I don't know, it's not in this report or motion. But the since the discussion has ensued, I wanted to weigh on it that I I don't think it's a great idea to tinker with that. If there really is some capital project we've all approved, or, you know, enough of us approved on day one, that after thinking about it, enough of us decide, a majority of us decide, hey, you know, let's not buy that, but it has nothing to do with what we're going to hire this person or where they're going to fund this new initiative or many make the server level service level change. They really have nothing to do with each other, so we shouldn't conflate them that way. There is a a mechanism to go and revisit capital approved things from day one. But I think the way we do it now, which is trying to get two thirds majority works well so that the impulse isn't to go back and strip things from capital that really have no impact on what we're really working on with the operational budget, which is the one that touches the tax rate right now. So just for what what it's worth, I don't know when or it's appropriate to debate making this change to the way we do business. It isn't in this motion, but we talked about it. So I just wanted to add my two cents in on it that I I don't personally, I don't think that's a it's needed. We really need to draw the clear line between the capital side of our budget and the operational side. But I'm in council's hands on that one.
Madam Cao.
Through the Deputy Mayor to Council, there is a motion in front of you as well. So maybe actually first I will speak to when to make that decision. I think that decision is probably best made on the at the public or at the morning of council. So when we come forward with the sorry, actually, prior when we come forward with the budget directions, it's probably best at that point in time to make that decision. The other option, and I think before the Deputy Mayor, there is in the motion, there is the opportunity to add that if there a third for to have the option of a third day if required. And the only reason I'd put it in the budget, so I do hope that we actually are able to do the two days. If we need to go to a third day, it's a little clunky without actually having it sort of spelled out here. So if we have the option to go to a third day so that we can have that sort of blocked off and then make the decision by noon on the second day, that might be a good way to move forward with, again, the fingers crossed that we do it in the two days.
And I do have that friendly amendment on in front of me. If counsel agrees with that, we can just move forward. We have consensus. Okay, do you want me to read the motion again or get the whole thing? Okay. That staff report CSR dash 2025 dash 34 2026 budget cycle planning dated March 19th, 2025 be received and that the 2026 budget cycle be advanced as per the schedule set out in CSR 2025 dash 34 and that the budget public meeting and the presentations of the various agencies, boards and commissions be set for November 26, 2025 and that the 2026 2026 budget or draft budget deliberations be set for December 9th and 10th, 2025 with the option of extending budget deliberations to December 11th, 2025 if required. I have the mover and the seconder from the first motion. Counselor Ball, are you okay with that? And Counselor McDonald. All in favor? unanimous, that's Carrie. Yeah, under 17.4. The staff report CSR dash 2025 dash 35 Town Harbor Culture and Tourism Budget Breakdown dated March 19th, 2025 be received for information. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor East and Counselor Ball. The floor is open for discussion. Counselor Mc Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor Meredith. We did receive a reply of your questions that clarified a lot of my questions in regards to this report. I'm just wondering by splitting the both, and I did check just make sure that the numbers did add to the original full sheet, which they did. Was there any surprises or cost savings by splitting it to the staff?
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor McDonald. No, because so when we do our budgeting internally, we do it at a very detailed level, right? We roll up those accounts for council for presentation purposes. And so the budget was done at that detailed level.
And if I may, Madam Deputy Mayor, so for the next budget deliberations, we can expect it to be split between Town Harbor and Culture and Tourism.
So my 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 plan was to post this document on our approved budget site. And essentially, all of our 2025 reporting and onward would be split in this format given council's appetite tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It'll be somewhat helpful for me to digest.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I actually really liked the analysis and listing everything that was put on. I appreciated that. I would also like to see the breakdown by festival because I think we had a lot of deliberation and extended conversation around just trying to figure out those numbers that weren't presented because of the way that it was presented. out those numbers that weren't presented because of the way that it was presented to us and how you put it together as a presentation. So I think that would save some time for a two day next year to actually have those types of numbers in front of us as well.
So the, the format of the budget is by category, right? Salaries, insurance, telecommunications, training. It's not designed by activity, which is what I would say each of those events is. Similar to what we did with, with parking, I would say that that's a separate report. Like if, if, if council were interested in knowing what does, what does each event cost? And I'm looking to, to the manager and to the director. I would say that would be the avenue to sort of, to bring that forward to council, whether that was a year end report or something, a summary, a summary of, of the events. And here's, you know, the attendance and here's the cost. You're going to get more detail that way than through, through the budget process.
Just, just, just further on that. So Ms. Neeling does that already for a year end summary of the events, but we just don't put the budget. So that's an easy add-on to that report that comes annually anyways to council as a summary. So we can do that.
Thank you. Yeah, I know we, we definitely stated this budget cycle that we were going to try to talk about these types of things before things were new and before the budget cycle happens, which is, I guess, part of why this is earlier this year. But I think we definitely like to see that. And if that's something that is applied to us beforehand, even so, we are able to make that decision. I know it's kind of unique in an event situation because we want to see if it's a viable event or we're utilizing tax dollars properly, similar to what we're going to see with like, you know, costs of the winter and the operations of winter maintenance that we had with this huge storm this year. It's just, and, and as you mentioned, parking. So sometimes there is a little more detail needed. So I, I would definitely like to see that beforehand. So what, however that comes to me is perfect. So I trust you've heard that and I appreciate your input. Thanks.
Counselor Meredith.
Thank you very much through you, Deputy Mayor Post, and thank you for the information. Karen, for the, all the clarity that you provided in your report. The one thing I want to touch on is tall ships. So in, in, no, nine through 12, you have the tall, this is kind of threw me off on that big ticket item of almost 620, well, 630,000 for the tall ships. It was under that category includes cost estimates for, so I wanted that breakdown, which provided 256,500 was for the tall ships. And, and the remaining, the remaining to less than $400,000 is, is for the other events combined that come, come to Midland. Okay. So I guess the, the concern is, is because the provincial, provincial funding, is it for the, the tall, tall ships? Possibly next year, or is it the grants that won't be available for the tall ships? And my concern is this is the possibility of losing this event for every, I guess it's three years that the tall ships come in. I think it's an important event for, for Midland. And I certainly don't want to lose it. So, so that's why I kind of separated this. I thought we were paying like 600,000 for the tall ships. So I'm like, wow, that's a lot of money for the tall ships. So I wanted that breakdown. But if you can answer that question about the funding and so forth.
Certainly through the chair to Council Emeritus, we have a grant application right now to the province to support tall ships. That's about $55,000. We also have a grant application into the County of Simcoe for another $10,000. We won't know for another month or two until those, unless those, if those grant applications have been successful. So once, if they are successful, we'll continue our planning. If they aren't successful, we'll cut back. We take, we have the reserves that the council approves annually, and we also have the income coming from sponsorships and also from ticket sales. That will help cover the cost of bringing in the tall ships, the necessary logistics that we need to have in place, such as security, some of our marketing as well. So we will still have an event. We'll just be able to do additional things, do additional marketing, bring in entertainment if we get the provincial grants.
So the, the, through you, Deputy Mayor Post, so the, the actual grants are in total about 65 to 70, $70,000 for this event. Is that pretty much standard? Can you apply for more grant funding? Not only in this event, but other events? Or is that kind of the standard that you get every year?
Deputy Mayor Post, in 2022, the provincial grant was, we actually received $80,000. This year, they changed the grant guidelines. Our, the max that we could apply for based on our 2022 budget for our event was $55,000. So we applied for the exact max that we possibly could. The county grant is also maxed out at $10,000. They're usually oversubscribed, so we suspect we'll get a little bit less. But that is the max that we can apply for. So we did. If there's any other grant applications that we can apply for, for any other events or programming, we always look at them and investigate them. And if there is a project that we can align with it, we will apply.
Seeing no further questions or comments, council, you've heard the motion. All in favor? It's unanimous. It's carried. On to 17.5. That report CSR 2025 dash 37, 2025 Development Charges Bylaw Dated March 19th, 2025 Be Received and that the development charge background study published on January 17th, 2025 and included as Attachment One and the updated area specific charge for Bond Beach Road Prepared Following the Public Meeting in accordance with Section 10 of the Development Charges Act 1997 be adopted and that future access capacity identified in the development charge background study be paid, paid for by development charges or any similar charges and that where grant funding is provided for a growth related project, to the extent possible, it be used to fund the non-growth portion of the project and that the local service policy is included in Attachment One, Appendix D be approved and that, that bylaw 2025 dash 21, being the 2025 Development Charges Bylaw be adopted. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Mayor Gordon? And Counselor McDonald? We have any questions or comments? Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Glad to see this. We had a good, a good public meeting where we discussed after the presentation, a bunch of options that are on the table. We're also seeing what our municipalities around are doing. We also recognize the serious headwinds that we're experiencing now and likely going to continue to experience, at least for the next two years with our economy and tariffs. And, you know, we're seeing just more sort of lethargy by home buyers right now. Home prices are starting to drop at a higher pace and new home sales are down, especially in Simcoe County. I'm, I'm resisting the urge from looking around Ontario. I'm just going to try and stick to just our locale. These are all challenges that the development community, who's also, you know, being pressured to get shovels in the ground and build housing, has to face. So, you know, we're, we're tasked with responsibly collecting development charges because we need to. You know, the growth needs to pay for growth. And I think the, the recommended increases that were, that are present in this report that we saw that night are responsible in polling developers. None of them are, you know, upset at all by the, the development charges in Midland. They were actually very happy that our development charges are what they are. Like obviously they like them less, but none of these are disincentives. I guess is the point is, we're very low compared to our comparators. They do like the, a couple of the concepts are floated. Nobody's asked me, though, to be clear, for the 50% reduction on all development charges for two years. I think they all recognize that, you know, we don't have bloated inflated increases as it is. We're very affordable from a DC perspective and that, you know, we don't, that kind of incentive could cripple us financially and put undue hardship on the rest of the repairs. There was some interest around that exempting DCs for three bedroom and plus rental units because they already get a little, well, with rental units, they get some HST forgiveness. You know, assuming that continues, that, that program continues. The three bedroom, you know, which is more of the family style, fully exempting DCs, that, that's nice, but we just don't have the pockets for it. And so in my conversation with the active developers, now to be fair, I haven't reached out to the ones that are dormant in our community. But I'm talking to the active ones that either have plans in front of us right now or in the, or in the, going through the approval pipeline. I think they can accept that we just don't have the pockets for these kind of incentives. We're not a Vaughan, right? Or a Mississauga or, you know, Toronto. But the one thing that they did ask for is the one that, that I brought up that night that appears as an option or alternative. And I like the recommendation that we don't necessarily enshrine it into the policy as a foregone conclusion for all development for the next five years. But the ability to, to move the, you know, the deposit for the soft side of the development charge, not the hard surface development charge, because, you know, pipes and infrastructure needs to go in before they can get going. But the soft side, that would become payable with no interest for up to two years when the actual occupancy permits issued. So I understand that presents some challenges to staff and tracking that to make sure we don't, you know, have an oopsie and forget. We have new staff turnover. All of a sudden, somebody gets their occupancy permit and they forget to pay the $600,000 that they owe us, right? And then they leave. Now we have, there's other mechanisms for us to collect that, but it's embarrassing and, you know, it doesn't need to happen. So, you know, the incentive for the developer is they get to keep that, that money in their pockets to pay for their development, get the shovels in the ground sooner and start building. And only when the house or the residence is ready for an occupancy permit, then that's when they actually have to open up their checkbook and, and write the remainder of the DC's due. So by not, by putting a two-year cap on that, you know, that's the incentive for development to happen within two years. If it doesn't happen within two years and they come back to us with a tale of woe, where their site plan has to be reapproved, council of the day, which wouldn't be us, this, this group specifically, likely, would have to decide, you know, is there merit in extending this further or no, you know what? This is someone who's just, doesn't have a plan, doesn't have the financing, you know? Or do we say, well, it's because of the economy, the market, we're in a recession and we, that gives us the flexibility is, I guess, where I'm going with this. So it doesn't cost the Midland taxpayer, other than we're going to forgive interest for that two years. The money that they would pay in full would be the full amount of our development charge that we'd assess, that we need to grow. And they don't mind doing that, but they pay it when they're actually getting paid, which really helps them out. So it's an option on here. So it doesn't form part of the, you know, the actual motion. So I'm not quite sure. I'm in the staff's hand on how this would be handled. My one sort of bone of contention is the ask for initial 25K to make this, you know, to track this deferral. I think we're not quite there yet. I don't think we need to spend that much money. I'm, I'm pretty confident through some analog measures, like it could be as simple as a red sheet stapled to the front of the file folder that has all their stuff in it, that has to come out of the drawer and blown off before, you know, at the desk when it's time to, to give them their occupancy permit. I think we can find some other analog, non $25,000 way to track this for the limited number of developers who are actually going to likely qualify for this. Because like the report says, we don't just carte blanche give this to everybody. This is a deal that we can make without being penalized for bonusing, that per development application for a developer who's showing all the signs that they are ready to go. You know, we're going to do our part and charge through the approvals, do everything we got to do. And then we give them the building permit and the expectation is they start digging, building houses and people move in within two years. If they, they honor their part of the equation, which is making that happen, they pay their DCs at the end. If they don't honor that and council decides not to continue this deal, then they, it becomes due immediately. How do we do that? You know, that's, maybe that means a letter of credit upfront, which effectively seizes the, the funding, you know? So the developer has to have the liquidity upfront for this deal, rather than us hoping they don't implode their, their corporation and walk away from their debts, which happens all the time because they create these shell corps for these developments. So I think there's ways, you know, and far be it for me to dream up how to do this. I think there's creative ways our staff can do it without 25 grand. They can come a way to protect taxpayers, incentivize getting shovels in the ground, extend this, you know, I think rather neat benefit for two years to really try and get houses built in Midland. And, you know, we can revisit it or council can revisit that after two years and decide where they want to extend this program or terminate it, depending on what the economy is looking like and what kind of traction we have and the uptake, of course. Right now, I, I only really foresee developers like Delbrook, who have three, two very large projects on the books right now and another small one on William Street coming. I expect Caitlin, who is doing the, doing, continuing, they're the only guys building right now, doing the work at Bayport, to probably come knocking on our door if we offer this incentive because they're actively building. And they have more phases and potentially even Pratt, who I think is, I think that processes get some traction again. And, you know, where that big subdivision, the residential side of it anyway, could start moving. So there's basically three. Maybe Seasons, I don't know what happened to Seasons, but, you know, whenever they decide they're going to order their hydro, which is a, you know, a good year from when you place the order to getting it. They may or may not qualify for this because the two years may have gone by before they're ready to start digging again. So I'm thinking for now, we're probably only looking at three developers with maybe five projects that would even sniff around and ask for this deal. But all of them, it would be a caveat that they put the shovels in the ground and get people moving into those houses within a two-year window. We get our DCs in full. They make their money off the housing and we have housing in our community. So everybody wins. So this option alternative is one that I'd like to see council support and endorse and offer on a two-year, you know, put a two-year sunset on it, have staff come up with a way to protect our interests, letter of credit, whatever it has to be, so that the funds we know we're, we're going to get one way or the other. And track it without spending an extra 25K that we didn't budget for this year. So there's my, hopefully not too long-winded pitch on why I think that's a good path forward for us. And I'm not proposing tinkering with the proposed rates. So you'll notice in here, even the Bond Beach rate that was a bit of a shocker, it's 17% increase, is now actually lower than first calculated. I don't, can't remember what the number is, but it's lower. And that would have a, like a material impact on the Bond Beach Road subject potentially of MZO development of some 400 houses, including rentals and the Habitat Homes. So it's, that number came down and, you know, I haven't heard any, if we were to offer this incentive to move the, the soft part of the DC charge to the occupancy permit, that makes that whole project financially viable again. Otherwise, without something like this, I would expect, I don't know, but I would expect that instead of seeing 400 houses, you know, it might drop down to 200 or something because, you know, the DCs are a lot higher to build on Bond Beach because we've already put the money upfront to service it. So there you go. Like sometimes I drone on and on. Hopefully I've made all my salient points and I'm in staff's hand on how what I'm talking about can be enshrined either into this motion or if it doesn't need to be in the motion, just if council agrees that that's the path forward, if that's good enough.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess with the DC charges lower on Bond Beach, I'm wondering if that's something that we're going to have issue with or if that was just a calculation that was a happy calculation or if there's going to be builders that have already come and built on that with those higher charges that are going to have issue with that. My next concern is I hear what you're saying about getting the two-year window for developers to have them pay this at occupancy. I appreciate that sentiment and I think it motivates people, but it also becomes a quality issue at that point. To gain an occupant, an occupancy permit, you're not really required to fully finish a home. Like you, you don't have to have everything in place when you get an occupancy permit. And there are lots of times when you get an occupancy permit that someone moves in, they're still finishing, finishing details. Those finishing details may be, are rushed or the build of the actual house is rushed because a construction timeline on two years is, is quite aggressive. I don't want to, I guess, trade that motivation for a quality issue and then someone moves into their house at occupancy and they're fighting with carry in for the next year trying to get, you know, things fixed in their home that weren't built properly to begin with, which we do see a lot. So I don't want to put a rush timeline on somebody for a motivating factor and, and then not have that quality after. So I, I appreciate the sentiment towards it. I think that it's a, unfortunately, I wish it wasn't an aggressive timeline, but the way that construction works. Unfortunately, I wish it wasn't an aggressive timeline, but the way that construction works, that is a pretty aggressive timeline to consider.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Mayor and Counselor Ball. So I'll jump in here. Lots of sort of things spinning in my head here. So. The soft services, I'll start with that, right? So you said about, you know, the pipes are in the ground, the roads built. Yeah, we certainly should collect that charge as soon as possible. And so what you'll also see is some municipalities actually. Require those hard services, as they call it, those charges to be paid at the time of the subdivision registration. Because if you build it, they will come, right? We can, we can certainly amend the bylaw, so it wouldn't necessarily be the motion. It would be the bylaw, right? Because it is a bylaw that we that we do use for development charges. I do have some some draft wording from our consultant that we we could potentially put in if that was council's wish. Couple things. So the the soft services is about thirty two percent of the charge. So if I'm looking at. A single semi detached dwelling. In an urban area that's got water and sewer, the total charge is. Is being proposed as twenty six thousand six forty one. So of that, eight thousand four twenty six is that soft service component that that you mentioned. And so we certainly could defer that. It will certainly add administration, right? And I I'm saying that in the sense of right now, our process is very efficient. When someone applies for a permit, they either do so online through cloud permit, they make their payment right there. Or they come into the office, they make a payment to C X O. It's done. It's a it's a point of sale transaction. The back office finance will reconcile it and make payments to the school and county. And so as part of this, those payments to school and county would also need to still be made. So on top of that twenty six thousand that we charge. The school and county also have a development charge that we collect on their behalf and then we remit. So that work would still need to be done. So we are adding administration through this tracking and I certainly can appreciate that the sticky on the file. Where where that becomes problematic is if we do have that that boom, which we've all been waiting for and are hoping will come. You know, over a two year period, you could have a hundred files, right? Or a hundred and fifty files. For me, from an from an audit control perspective. Not not what I'd like to see. I certainly think that we could utilize cloud permit to do some of the tracking. We certainly could work with Watson to 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 track as well, which is again, sort of where that up to twenty five thousand dollar budget came from. Maybe there's, you know, a modular we need in cloud permit. My sort of, but that being said, the issue for me is at the end of a project and I built my house, so I know you don't have any money. Right? And so now you've got to, you know, pay your development charges, which are a significant chunk of money. You've also now got a tax bill from the town that used to be vacant land that now has a pretty nice house on it. I don't know that you're sort of setting up the end buyer for success. We have had a couple of deferral agreements and so that option is available actually as the bylaw is written today, right? So what you've been proposing on those sort of large scale developments, we certainly could. Go through that process, go through the agreement. I would also make sure it was a bylaw so that it is trackable, right? So that it doesn't get lost. Through through staff turnover, through change in systems, whatnot. But I I don't know that it actually, I don't know that it helps the sort of the end, the end buyer who maybe gets that that big surprise bill at at the time. Now, from a collectibility, I'm not concerned because in the bylaw. In in the act, we are able to add it to taxes, right? And so we have an agreement now that we have added to taxes. It means they're paying fifteen percent interest a year. It means. Their tax bill, you know, is is larger than they thought, right? I don't, I don't know that it helps, but. Just my two cents.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just. Based on what Madame CFO said. It would add significant administration cost, then there'd be asked for extra staff, which will add cost to taxpayers, ratepayers. So it's like a domino effect of trying to help the builder or incentivize the builder, I would say, to build home faster, but. There is a, there's an action to every, I guess, every reaction to every action and this would be the. The reaction would be the administration challenges that the staff would be presented with. Based on our, like the hotel businesses, things become complicated when a guest pays when they when when they pay us later. We're always chasing for what we're owed. Currently I'm owed by a couple of guests. Because we build that relationship and then we're like, okay, yeah, pay us later and. Eventually they 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 don't pay you and then we're like holding the bag. So. That could happen if if a developer goes under. We're we're paying the county, we're paying the province, but then. Who's going to pay us? That's the question. Thank you.
Through Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Patel, just just on that. So because it, because these unpaid charges could be added to taxes or. Or would be added to taxes, I should say. I I'm not concerned about the ultimate collectibility. It's more the process to collect and and the administration as you as you noted. Ultimately, if someone didn't pay us for three years, just like their taxes, their property goes for tax sale, right? So we we do have that that avenue to eventually collect, but it is quite an extensive. Process, the tax sale process and is very labor intensive from from staff's perspective. So it is certainly one that we try to avoid.
Counselor Major.
And the other thing too, I think for people that live in Midland, all of a sudden they find out that. The town's got to do all the bookwork for some building a new house. I just. I I might do it just too much bureaucracy and too much extra. Extra staff time for something we really don't have to do.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I guess I just want to clarify because. We're kind of speaking as if it's just a single dwelling. That would have a tax bill that we would collect on. If it's a developer that's passing that tax bill on to an owner. We wouldn't necessarily be able to. Get at these from the tax bill because they wouldn't technically be the ones that would owe this to us, correct?
So the the charge would go with the property, right? And so that's where it becomes complicated. Is it the developer? Is it the owner? Who's left? Putting the bill essentially. Again, love to think that everybody's going to pay their bill before it passes ownership because that would be ideal. But sort of the actual reality of that might to be determined.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you and thank you for the. Proposal, Mayor Gordon, and thank you for the explanation CFO Baron. And. I propose that we pass the motion the way it is, the bylaw the way it is, but I just want to clarify. Did I hear you say that there is an option in the bylaw, the way it stands now to defer? The payment? So. If it's like builder, no build because of you can negotiate that? Did I understand that? Or did I just dream that it was going to be there?
To Counselor McDonald. So in section six of the bylaw, timing and of calculation and payment. It talks about it being payable at that building permit stage, but then it goes on to talk about. Basically being able to enter into an agreement. Notwithstanding subsection one, which talks about when it becomes payable, council from time to time at any time. May enter into agreements providing for all or any part of the development charge to be paid before or after it would otherwise be payable. In accordance with section twenty seven of the act. So again, we we are doing that now. We haven't done one in. Since my time here, but twenty nineteen, we did one. And. Twenty twenty, I'm going to say. So we have, we have done a couple.
DC calculations. I digested every part of that. Thank you very much.
Counselor Patel.
Well, there could be an option if someone were to pull multiple permits. We can incentivize by a discount, like let's say if someone were to pull twenty, thirty. Rather than deferring for two years or giving a, you know, one permit fifty percent discount. You would have to pull multiple permits and that could be an option. So you're kind of incentivize somebody to build like twenty homes, thirty homes at a time. Is that? Could that be a possibility?
So through that agreement process, council could could certainly grant that relief. It would, however, cost the town, right? So the whole premise of the development charge is that you can't pass. The charge that one developer should pay on to another, right? So if you are granting relief to one developer, the town then needs to cover that shortfall.
Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Just to be clear, this, I'm not suggesting we do this for some guy that wants to build a house on his vacant lot. This is for large scale development. Either we, I thought we all agreed that we're in a housing crisis and that, you know. We want homes to get built in our community of all different densities and sizes and costs. So what the provinces challenge us to do is to, and the federal government, honestly, you know, at least one of the. Parties is calling us all gatekeepers and crooks, basically, because we're not, we're standing in the way of development. Which nothing could be further from the truth in Midland, especially this term. But we need, the the ask is we got to have some skin in the game. So we have a pretty low development charge now. Comparatively speaking, when you saw the graph. And there's options that we're seeing larger municipalities that are competing for the same people that we want to attract, we frankly. Dropping their development charges fifty percent. Some cases they're freezing them there or there. There's all different things that they're they're doing. Some, they have larger tax bases, so they can absorb these things greater than we can. We don't have that kind of tax base. So. That's why I wasn't suggesting we explore the fifty percent discounts or waiving them entirely. We already have to for things that qualify under Bill twenty three, you know, nonprofit housing and. And the like. So. I guess just codifying a deal that we're offering for a two year term. Basically is an incentive for developers to start engaging with us now and putting shovels in the ground soon and later. If we don't pass into these incentives and we just leave it up to. You know, the developer basically to come and ask us, hey, for some relief. Then. You know, I don't know if we're actually meeting the the mandate to get incentivize homes getting built quicker, especially in these two years. So if we want to just status quo and here's our development charges, develop here if you want, people. That's kind of the way it's always been and will continue to be unless we are a little bolder and I'm not suggesting. We roll the dice and offer deep discounts because we can't afford that as a municipality. But I just think by moving the, you know, the the costs, which by the way, that's closing, it's not like the guy that buys the house has to pay the missing development charge. The developer builds this into the cost of his home. So the bill doesn't go to the, you know, the person that buys one of these four hundred houses. That's part of the closing deal. When occupancy permits are are sought from the town, the developer eats all that, pays it and then the house. It's baked into the house deal, the price of the house is sold for. So we're not dealing with Mrs. Smith and Mr. Jones and all the people individually buying homes. We're dealing with a large scale developer who's built a lot of housing in our community in the next two years rather than the next twenty years. And we're just letting them defer paying it and we're putting in a system to track it. If it turns out that it's impossible to do. You know, this year with one or two applications that may avail themselves of this if we pass it. Then, you know, we'll have some some. Some sense of interest from the development community and we can budget in next year's budget twenty five grand or up to twenty five grand for the systems or the module or whatever it is staff think. I just don't. I think it's a disincentive right now to to tie twenty five thousand dollars to this ask while asking us to be a bit bold and try and encourage. Developers to like. Basically. Pass or get off the pot with developments in Midland. Some of them have been lingering for years. If there's money to tie to it. So if there was no money tied to it, staff can figure out how to do this. I know they can with no money. You know, if council is amenable to offering incentive and committed to trying incentivize getting shovels in the ground, we're talking about. Over the next two years, then we. We codify this rather than just leaving it as it is on the books is something we can wheel and deal on a onesie twosie basis. If this isn't passed, we can still do this. It's just, we're not advertising to the development community, except perhaps through, you know, Mr. Howard's reporting. That we're we're doing this for them. Like this is an option. So, you know, the province and the feds are challenging us and arguing arguing that municipalities, not us specifically, but in general. Aren't doing enough to incentivize development. And here's an option we can do, like arguably will cost us nothing and then other than staff time, which isn't nothing. I get that. And actually shows our commitment to getting things done. If the developer doesn't fulfill their obligation, which is get the process. Finished with the town and put shovels in the ground and build houses and have you move in, then they don't get the incentive and we still get the money because the developers got to pay us. So it's not left hanging for a tax bill and, you know, Mrs. Jones who buys one of the four hundred houses, I guess is my point, unless I'm wrong about how this works, Madam CFO.
I'm I'm not sure if our building inspector is, or sorry, building official is online or not. But my understanding is that we can't hold an occupancy permit based on unpaid development charges. Different than when we actually issue the permit, charges need to be paid, right? So. Again, I I would say in a perfect world, the developer pays it before that occupancy and before transferring of ownership. I have to plan for the worst, right? Because that's ultimately what we have to deal with. So. Again, the agreement. If we were to, if we are going to do this, again, the provisions in in the the bylaw as written do allow for us to enter into agreements. Our consultant and and, you know, staff have have conferred as well. We would want a letter of credit or bond or something. That also. Costs money, right? So. Again, some of the savings may not, you know, the savings may not be as big as what we think. But that agreement would would be that sort of that trigger point and give us, give us that. Continuity to make sure that that things do get. Built accordingly, but there is, there is, there is added administration. So we will, we will need to investigate our current system because. Make sure that it, and it likely can. It's just it hasn't been something that the building team has done, right? The building team does manage the cloud permit system. So I just, I don't. We need, we need to investigate. The additional funding was to work with our consultant a little bit more on what that would that would look like. Not to say that we need the full twenty five. It's the nice round number. Again, we only spend what we need. But I understand that if it's not feasible for this year's budget. Then we will work with what we have.
So just in follow up. In the absence of what I'm suggesting then, using the existing language in the existing bylaw. If we were in, you know, a developer comes to us and says, hey, I'd like to get this deal, which we've done in the past. There still has to be some tracking involved and all the same kind of levers need to be pulled that I'm suggesting would. Need to be pulled in order to defer this to the issuing of the occupancy permit, which could be, to your point, a nonstarter. We can't actually tie. I'm led to believe that that's not the case because other municipalities are doing this, but, you know, again, I don't have the the bill, the CBO would be the guy to talk to. But so if we, if I don't pull this thread anymore and just leave it as it is. Then we still have to, because I'm going to be telling developers, hey, avail yourself of this. I want to get shovels in the ground and people moved into houses before this term expires, if possible, which is possible. Then I'm going to ask them to avail themselves of this. That's still going to cost us time and effort and money and tracking, I assume, right? If we defer it. If we enter into a deferral basically to the end, we don't tie it to occupancy, we just say to the end and we all just. If we enter into a deferral basically to the end, we don't tie it to occupancy, we just say to the end and we all, we all decide what the end is. Comes to council, hopefully we ratify it and the deal gets done and the guy starts building sooner than later, which is my only objective. Like that's all I want. I just, I want to stop hypothetical developments that have been on paper for years. Here we are in a housing crisis. You know, we have the, all the headwinds of all the drama down south. People, you know, struggling in a market that looks like it's starting to tank. If we can get some homes built in a market like that, that's a real win for Midland, which is all I care about. So I'm counting on staff to find a way. If I don't, if I don't need to wordsmith and change anything in this, you guys can find a way and then present these options to the development community. Then bring them to council for ratification. I'm all over that. I'm, I'm content that the existing wording and the language and this discussion we've had tonight is enough to uh. Motivate us to really try and incent development that's actually going to happen in the next two years.
Counselor Meredith, was your hand up?
Thank you. I did pull this one. Um, this, um, and I, I did get clarity on, on the question I had from CFO. The um, the twenty five thousand that uh, that staff is asking for this. And other possible expenses, whether it's bonds on the property, so forth, um, that you speak of, Madam CFO. I, I don't think that should be borne by the taxpayer. I, I think the developer should pay that at, at the end. Or upfront. So any costs associated with, with, with um, software, so forth, they're not paying anything upfront. Interest they'll just gain on, on, on their money sitting in the bank as they, they go will. Will pay for itself with this twenty five thousand. I don't think it should be borne by the, the tax base to give incentive to a developer. I, I do like to, the incentives. But at, at little cost to the, to the taxpayers. So I would suggest to, to take the twenty five K. Or whatever it costs, and if there's legals and so forth, um, to put it uh, on the developer. Versus the tax base. And I also want to make sure that, you know, the person buying the house. What Madam CFO is alluding to, that may. It's paid upon occupancy, but I think the developer has to pay up before uh, the occupancy per, permit gets um. Issued to the uh, the homeowner. So. That I think was, uh, Mayor Gordon is alluding to. So it. We can, there's a lot of developers out there that are, are, are not quite, uh, you know, full above board. So you're trusting a developer here. So um, want to make sure that we're not stinging the, the homeowner and if there's a way of doing it. And another thing is, is, is can council, instead of this being out to the open market, uh, can developers come and request? Some type of incentive to council, whether it be this council or the next council, instead of it being right across the board. We can designate on track writer, track records of other developments to our due diligence and, and, and so forth. And just awarded to not everybody i- in the bylaw. So we can kind of pick and choose this council, next council and so forth.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Um, I agree. That's what I was asking before is, you know, to make sure that. That's not going to be a single person paying it when the developer, you know, gives them occupancy. So I would, I would like to know that information before we vote on this. Um, and I think a letter of credit like two years prior to building something, like a lot can change in two years with that. So I don't think that's going to give us any more assurance. And I just wanted to touch upon, um, I don't think it's a fair statement to say that we're not doing what we need to do to build houses. I think that we just got. A large municipal grant. It's going to give the infrastructure to have, you know, service ready development lands. And I think that we've just discussed as well Midland Bay Landing. It's going to be an opportunity for people to be excited to come into our community. Financially, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't think we're. Closing off development and not doing what we need to do to build houses. I think we are doing our part. We want to have responsible growth. And we want to continue to grow Midland into a community that we are going to want to be a part of in twenty years. Like I understand wanting to build homes fast. But we also have to be mindful of that growth and we are doing it in appropriate ways by having service ready lands and by attracting. Developers that in tune will attract housing after Midland Bay Landing. Hopefully incentivizes people to come to our community.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, I've read the motion. I guess we'll vote on, on the motion now. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, moving on to seventeen point six. The staff report CSR dash twenty twenty five dash thirty eight. Dissolution of the cultural alliance in the heart of Georgian Bay dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty five be received and. That council approved the dissolution of the culture, culture alliance in the heart of Georgian Bay effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty five. As presented in this report and that the clerks circulate this report to the clerks of the town of Penetanguishing. And townships of Tay and Tiny and that staff bring forward a report outlining the financial reconciliation of the cultural alliance funds. At a future council meeting. And that staff be directed to reestablish the culture Midland brand, which existed prior to the formation. Of the cultural alliance and that staff be directed to remove the inspir- inspirational people's banner. From the light stranded, the light, the light stranded on King Street in front of. In front of the Midland Cultural Center and notify nominees gifting the banner to one of the recipients if requested. And the staff bring forward a list of potential cultural program, programming projects and associated costs for council's consideration. As part of the twenty twenty six budget. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor East and Counselor Major. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Counselor Meredith.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Um, yeah, I, I pulled this report. Um, and I was kind of looking at um. In the motion four and six. Kind of wanted to discuss those motions because in the, um, when we voted to dissolve the cultural alliance. And it was costing us about, you know, less than ten thousand dollars for each municipality. So, and now we're looking at, um, you know, not only um. We're reestablishing a cultural in Midland, the brand, and then, then we're going to be in, that's number four in motion four and then in six. Staff's going to bring forward a list of potential programming and the costs associated with that in twenty twenty six budget. So. I'm not sure, and this is where I, I, I don't agree with it because we. Basically dissolved uh, the cultural alliance. And to spend more in, which I'm, I'm gathering in uh, the, the cultural Midland. So. Because I don't see how we're going to get, um, you know, um. If, if that was the main reason or what was the reason of, of the cultural alliance? We just figured there wasn't enough programming there, so forth, there. We came to decision, but now we're actually going to go spend more money in the, in the Midland cultural. From what, the way I'm reading this, unless I'm, I'm wrong. I don't know what your, your future uh, programming is, is, is. You know, attributed to this. So maybe you could elaborate on it. Thank you.
Your Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor Meredith. Yeah, so before the cultural alliance was formed, we had a culture Midland committee and there was a budget allocation to that committee. The cultural alliance was formed to, as a joint partnership with the other, with the other municipalities and both the First Nation. Going forward, if we go back to having culture Midland, it would be culture Midland webpage. So we, if we did any programming, we'd use culturemidland.ca instead of just putting Midland.ca and having someone try to navigate the website. We would also take back the social media accounts. But the budget that I would bring forward to council would be very similar to what we've been now locating to the cultural lines the past few years. I see it in the range of about ten thousand dollars or so, depending on what programs we want. Um, and I would bring forward a list of opportunities for the, for council to decide if you're interested in them as well. And if there's a larger project, we would certainly seek grants for it. And if there's something where we had a grant where we needed a matching fund or contribution from the municipality, I would bring that forward to council as well.
Thank you for clarifying it. Because when I saw the, the report, I'm just, and, and the ask, I'm like, okay, this sounds like more than what we were spending before. So, um, thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Of course, uh, to me, this is like a. Funeral, a burial. I thought the culture alliance committee. Evolved into a meaningful and, and. Impactful committee. They did a lot of good work. And I want to publicly thank those who served on, on that culture alliance. I learned a lot and enjoyed my time. Of volunteering with them and promoting the alliance. Unfortunately, we weren't able to. Keep the, our partners with the alliance. Committed and that's, I think. Part of our problem here. But I want to um, refer to your staff report, Ms. Neely, and. I, I went through and I marked the different um. Things that you proposed to do with the Midland culture. And I counted seventeen different items that you proposed. Some of them said no financial cost other than staff to create. Often it's other than and staff, but then there's the other points where there is additional expenses. So. You know, you're going to carry on some of the projects and some of them you say won't be able to happen, but. Like, I'm, I'm not going to. Keep um, saying I hate to see it dissolved because I, I think it's important that we work as a. Several communities together for the heart of Georgian Bay, but I will certainly help support some of these projects. At no cost, no further cost. So hopefully, uh, yeah, let's continue. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing that, what the new culture banner would be like. And I'm almost um. Ashamed to admit. I don't know the inspirational people's banner. Why does it have to be removed from the light standard?
Your Deputy Mayor Prost to Counselor McDonald. The banner right now is, there's only one. So it's kind of standing out by itself. The idea of the project was that there would be multiple banners over the course of the years. I know that one municipality is already taking down their banner because we had one in each of the five communities. If we were to keep it there, there's no cultural alliance anymore. It doesn't reference anything. I'm thinking that the downtown, you know, we can put a different banner in that location if that's a. Council's decision. That's why it says one of the recommendations for council to consider.
So you'll be promoting a new banner? Excuse me.
Through to, uh, Counselor McDonald, depending on what programs we have in the staff available. Thankfully, the council approved a new staff person for us this year. We're interviewing right now. That gives us additional capacity to do. Cultural programs in addition to what we're already doing. So that's why there's a lot of lists, things that I'd like to continue to do. These are things that I've been working on for the last five, six years, seven years. I don't want to see them lost. Even though the cultural alliance committee no longer exists, I still want to see cultural programming in celebration of culture in our community. Because it's very important. And while we still may not have the, the formal committee, I still. If there's opportunities to partner with the other municipalities in some projects or bringing in community volunteers, I still want to pursue those opportunities.
I could just ask one more question in regards to those programs in that, are you anticipating having um. A committee established like the, the culture alliance committee, but just a Midland culture committee to help you with some of these projects?
Third to Counselor McDonald, not, not establishing a new committee at this time. I think I'd like to take a bit of a break and evaluate what we can do staff and. See what programs we can, can you do bring forward and then bring them to council. Also, our municipal cultural plan was approved in twen- in twenty fourteen. It's time for it to be reviewed. So we may look at reviewing that municipal cultural plan and see what the recommendations from that plan bring forth. And that may. Include having a new committee or maybe not.
I'm sure you're going to, I just have the. I'm sure you're going to approve the, to our neighboring communities that left us. They're going to be regretting it.
Counselor Patel, Mayor Gordon, and then Counselor Ball.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Prost. Um, so I look at culture. Culture is like Lotus, Lotus the flower, which is. Represents purity and rebirth. And although the cultural alliance circled the bowl, but you know, culture is not dead. Culture is alive and culture is going to be part of Midland and we are going to rebirth it. And that's what this report is for, that it was always part of Midland, it will be part of Midland and. Just to kind of back, backstory on the cultural alliance, the reason I was not happy with is. Meetings were about changing the logos or cha- talking about, oh, we should do this programming, that programming. Most of the programming that was done in the cultural alliance, ninety percent, I would say, or close to it, was done through grants. And that's what this cultural Midland culture will be. It's a lot of the money that will come for the. Projects we want to do or programming we want to do will be done through the grants. There will be a base cost like uh, Ms. Neeling. Said that it'll be ten thousand dollars, just to see if, what, what we can do with the programming, but um, I'm. I'm pretty sure that this will be what, what Midland residents need is the Midland cultural. Programming or center, I guess. Thank you.
Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. Just, and just to be clear, our neighbors didn't leave the program. We, we imploded the program. To, too much a surprise of our, our, our neighbors arguably. So, uh, you know, that was done because, well, just repeating it. The organization was chronically underfunded. Right? I mean, that's the bottom line. They didn't have enough money to do anything except for these grants and their, the measly ten grand they were asking for this year. From each of the four funding partners was just not enough to do anything all year. For forty grand, there was nothing planned. So, you know, that, that cemented, you know, when I read the report, like there was no value for Midland from spending this money. Nothing was going to happen. Except sharing some Facebook posts and stuff and a bunch of meetings and time and effort. So, you know, we, we collapsed that and when the intention wasn't signaling that culture is not important to Midland, that's nothing could be further from the truth. I mean, we host the Midland Cultural Center at great expense, you know, and there's amazing programming that happens there. We have artists all over the place. And our music scene, I mean, we have a rich and diverse art and cultural community within Midland. And yes, we draw people from our neighboring municipalities. So the intent is, you know, if we're going to spend money and time, which we were, because it was our staff that was really, you know, the driving, beating heart of, of the cultural alliance. We may as well do it on our own terms, where we have some autonomy and we can control how much we spend, where it's spent, what the programming looks like. And we'll host it ourselves. For, for several years, I, every time I went to cultural alliance events, I raved like, man, you guys. You need to come and ask for more money at budget time. Look, I would tell them that literally in public. And what did they do? They came and asked for less money, which I know I sound ridiculous saying this right now, but that was the honest truth. They, they, they underfunded this organization and quite frankly, it started with one of the funders who I'm not going to name. Or, you know, I'll shame, but I won't name, you know, last year, the rest of us all paid our twelve five and they decided to pay ten. So I mean, they were signaling right then that it wasn't important to them. They didn't feel they were getting ROI. Rest of us paid the, the rate and they underfunded it. So then, you know, shock and awe when Midland says circling the bowl and we're out of this thing. You know, so we're, we're going to manage this in-house. It's part of our culture on tourism. We have a department, we have people with that in their, their titles and their job descriptions. They've done it before, they can do it again. Bring, we're bringing this back home, basically. And we're going to manage and grow this thing internally and, and over time, we'll see budget increasing for it and we'll see the yield of that because we're going to see the fruits of the labors. And if at some point the neighbors decide, hey, we want to be part of that rather than replicating what Midland's doing, I, I would have no problem at all, as long as they were all willing to pay to play and not, you know, basically ride off of Midland ratepayers who were floating the, not only the, you know, the ball, we were paying most of the way again. I feel like I'm talking about the rec center. Right? Because our staff were, were the ones predominantly, you know, running the show. So for all the volunteers and the good work that was done, that I really enjoyed going to and gave rave reviews on, no disrespect for a moment. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And please stay engaged with us if you wish. You know, for heaven's sake, don't abandon the whole cultural scene just because the, the, you know, we just, we decided to dissolve this entity. We're still committed to arts and culture in our community, deeply committed. There will be budget asks, it's going to phase up slowly as we get a new staffer on board and new ideas are created. And I'm sure we'll, we'll all rally around supporting these things and we'll have some autonomy and control over them to the point where maybe to Counselor McDonald's point, there may be a committee of council dedicated to this again, but it'll be us doing it because we're the funders and we've got all the skin in the game. So, again, you know, when we had this original conversation, you know, maybe I, I was too curt about it and, you know, remiss in thanking the volunteers and all the people, even our, our partners for all the work they did over the years. You know, the decision to collapse this thing wasn't because of lack of, of effort, it was lack of funding. And, you know, this was going to be a nothing year for them. So here's our opportunity to Counselor Emeritus's point, you know, we're going to do as much as we can on a shoestring budget this year. We're not going to abandon all the, all the, you know, the soft parts that it was, you know, the web stuff and the videos that were done, none of that's all going in the garbage can. We're just going to collect it, it's going to go back under our old brand. And if and when, and I, you know, I heard Tay and Tiny's points loud and clear, if and when we are going to enter into these agreements in the future, there should be a clear MOU, which doesn't allow one partner to say, I'm going to pay less than everyone else. Right? That would be a breach. And clearly defines the exit term. So if you decide you're disenchanted with the organization, no big deal, you got to give two years, but you got to pay, you know, like, all these things will be worked out. And that was fair criticism from, from Tay, that we did this all in a handshake. We didn't, previous councils went set up last term. So, again, I just want to signal people that arts and culture is super important to me, and it certainly feels like it is to the rest of council. The effort that has been done thus far is, it will be preserved and it's meaningful to us. And we're going to look at new ways to, to actually get things done this year and into the following years around arts and culture programming. You know, most of it will happen in Midland, but the door is always open to our neighbors to collaborate. And I think I even heard Member Brunel, Counselor Brunel from Tiny float that to his council when they were talking about, you know, formally pulling out after we pulled the pin, that there could be collaboration. Absolutely, there could be. It's just the way it was formalized was too loosey goosey, it let people underfund it and it just was spinning its wheels. So took that off the track and putting it back together and putting it back on, it's just going to be running on a Midland road right now rather than a county road. So that's kind of my view on this and, and my commitment to seeing arts and cultural things thrive in our community.
Counselor Ball.
Thank you. I would like to see the banner stay up until we have something else there. I think that it had merit to be there and just because we dissolved this committee, I don't think that means the merit goes away for it to stay. Actually, I, I don't love that people are taking them down already. They're important to be there or they wouldn't be there to begin with. So that's my one thing. And my second is the website, saying that everything's going to be migrated over to a new Culture Midland website. I know we're still awaiting like a tourism website. So my concern is that I would like this website to be seamlessly transitioned April 30th. You don't go there, you go to ours. Like, is that something that is going to be available on April 30th?
Through Deputy Mayor Post to Counselor Ball. Yes, what, what we're going to, it's not going to be a new website, it's going to be a new webpage. There is a domain that will direct you to that webpage. So we're actually in the process right now of going through the Cultural Alliance current website, seeing what we're going to migrate. Some of this content will not come, but we will take over what we think is important, that we need to preserve and it'll be on that webpage. When we create the new website later this year, then we'll, we'll make it look like a landing page, it'll look a little fancier than what it will look like now. But, yes, and that we'll be doing the same thing for Midland Tourism, we'll have a webpage and then that'll have the domain name for midlandtourism.ca that will direct, direct people there as well. So when we go to the new website, it'll all be there and looking very nice, but we will still have content available as of April 30th when we shut down the Cultural Alliance website.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I just don't want to, you know, be up here speaking about how important culture is and how we're going to save everything and then it's nowhere to be found until who knows when, right? So I appreciate knowing that that's happening.
Mayor Gordon.
Sorry, one last question. As I watch other council meetings unfold, talking about this, there seemed to be some belief that there's going to be a trove of cash left over when this thing shuts down, that we're all going to have to divvy up. I was led to believe that's not the case. In fact, it's, the money that's in that account is to pay our one employee to the end of their term and that there would be an immaterial amount of money left over, something, you know, in the tens of dollars, not thousands. I wonder if you could validate that? And maybe some communication needs to go out to our, our former funding partners just to manage their expectations that there's not some big bag of money waiting for them when we wrap this thing up.
Through Deputy Mayor Post to Mayor Gordon. Our clerk will circulate this report to the other municipal clerks so they will see what we've written in there. We'll be able to provide after April 30th, the proper reconciliation of all the expenses that have been in revenues from the past few years and we'll be able to bring that forward to council. When I sat down with finance staff and we figured approximately how much wages would be till the end of April, what we'd be spending on programming costs, wrapping things up, wrapping up the current grant, allocating the, for each, each staff person within the town of Midland, we allocate a certain budget for their workstation and their IT equipment. Once we factored that all in, there, there's not, there wasn't going to be anything left in the budget.
Thanks. So that isn't actually in this report, so it might be helpful to add that as an addendum because I still think there's a widely held belief with the other councils that there's cash coming to them at the end of this process.
Just to follow up to, to Mayor Gordon, if there's, under the financial impact, it does have a short statement about that, but it doesn't say exactly how much, we don't know yet because we haven't done the financial reconciliation, but it does allude to that there will unlikely be any funds distributed.
Seeing no further questions or comments. Council, you've heard the motion, all in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Onto number 18, notice, notices of motion. Do we have any notices of motion? Onto 19, general announcements. I know we have those. Mayor Gordon.
I, I can go last, Counselor McDonald, if you'd like. I only have one. Okay, all right. Now I'm slimming my announcements down today. So I have some big news coming from the fire service. I'm proud to announce that our fire prevention officer, Kale McLean, is being awarded the His Majesty King Charles III's Coronation Medal, which is a really big deal. It's a brand new medal, of course, stemming from the coronation of our king, which is why we're called a sovereign nation, in case Mr. Trump is watching. We still have what, we still have a, anyway, I'm sure he's watching, yeah. Well, I was critical of him in my videos, so maybe he's tuning in and figuring how he was going to tariff me. But I'd like to say that in 2024, the Governor General of Canada established the His Majesty King Charles III Coronation Medal to commemorate the coronation of His Majesty King Charles III. There's a real stretch, as King of Canada, just saying. The prestigious medal is awarded to individuals who have made significant contributions to Canada, their province, territory, region, or community. Community being the salient one for, for Kale, or who have been, who have achieved outstanding accomplishments abroad that bring credit to Canada. So I'm delighted to announce that FPO Fire Prevention Officer Kale McLean of the Town of Midland Fire Service has been selected as a recipient of this distinguished honor and in recognition of, of his dedication to the fire prevention and public education. And I did probe a bit more from the fire chief on, hey, listen, give me, give me some more here, like, what did he do? You know, it's not saving a cat in the tree, you get an award from the king for. Uh, so there is a long, a long laundry list of achievements and quite frankly, they're all going to be repeated tomorrow night. So I'd like to invite anybody who would like to cheer on FPO McLean and see this amazing medal. If you'd like, you can come to the Royal Canadian Legion in Coldwater, which is 2 Michael Land Drive in Coldwater, guess, at, between four and six, so be there like 3:30 tomorrow night, March 20th. And that's when the presentation will take place. So that's a real honor. We're going to have our, our newly re-minted MPP Jill Dunlop, who's now the Minister of, no, not education, no, no. She got a new job anyway, it's emergency preparedness or something. Uh, sorry, I don't mean to disrespect the ministry, I didn't know it was a thing, but that's her new title and she'll be in attendance to present the coronation medal. And of course, family and friends will be there to gather and celebrate this well-deserved recognition. So a huge shout out to Kale. Congratulations. I'm going to make, make my way over there, I'm sure I can be there for tomorrow and make sure I'm one of the clapping hands, but big congrats, hometown proud, way to go Kale.
Thank you. I would just like to share with my fellow counselors and anybody that's listening that on Tuesday of this week, I attended a North Simcoe Drug Strategy meeting. It was hosted at the library and there were, I would say maybe 20 people or so, but 13 different service providers there. And they're planning some education session or an education session on how, to help the public understand and create some empathy and what is, why it's important to understand and treat the, the treatment for drug addiction. So that's happening in the background in the community. And then next week, Counselor Ball and I have a meeting with the Simcoe County Health Unit to help, to hopefully discuss and, well, we're going to discuss, but develop a poverty reduction strategy plan for Midland. And I'm, I'll give a notice, that I'm going to give a notice of motion that we host another symposium of sort this fall, but I'm working on that.
Anybody else have? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Patel.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Post. You were blindsided. So, yeah, it's a proud moment for Mr. McLean to receive that award. I did request to join the celebration tomorrow, so if the mayor can maybe give me a ride, gas is still $1.49. Thank you.
Very well, carpool. It's okay, I said I had one, but I actually have one more because I'm going to put my other hat on. As one of your reps on the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit, I'd be remiss not to call out the fact that the measles epidemic that was seeming climb up from the US and into Canada has now touched our catchment area. So just a reminder that measles is a vaccine preventable disease that we'd all but eradicated. However, with vaccine hesitancy and general distrust of science, much of which came out of the COVID pandemic, there are clearly a lot of parents that didn't have their kids vaccinated for the MMR vaccine, measles, mumps, rubella. And the health unit and just me as a dad and a parent are urging you to please talk to a accredited health provider, which isn't Google or some wing nut on YouTube, and ask them about the efficacy of this vaccine and consider having your children immunized. This is not, you know, the, what do they call it? There's so many memes out there. This, this is not a joke, this disease, and it is a highly, highly contagious virus and entirely preventable, 100% preventable through herd immunity, which we used to enjoy in this country. So there, that's my, my medical officer of health repeating message for you as one of your reps on that, that health unit. Please talk to an accredited health professional about getting your kids vaccinated or yourself if you have a mean. And let's try and stop the spread of this completely preventable disease in our community. Thank you.
Okay, with no further announcements, we're at 20. And I have a motion to close committee of the whole and to resume formal session. The motion is moved by Counselor Major, seconded by Counselor Patel, that the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? That's carried. Back to you, Mayor Gordon.
All right, thank you very much. A motion here moved by Counselor Ball, seconded by Counselor McDonald, that the recommendations committee a whole for the meeting of March 19th, 2025. Be, I almost ran it over there. Be adopted as resolution of council. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next move by Deputy Mayor Post, seconded by Counselor Ball, that bylaw 2025-21 being a bylaw for the imposition of development charges and to repeal bylaw 2019-80 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Next move by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Emeritus, that a bylaw 2025-22 being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of this regular council meeting with closed session held March 19th, 2025 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Any opposed? And last but not least, move by Counselor Major, seconded by Counselor East, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourn at 9:30, 9:00 PM. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. We are adjourned, thank you.